Called to order the June 20th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, the Redevelopment Successor Agency, and the Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by Caitlin Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our legal counsel regarding two items of significant exposure to litigation and one item of anticipated litigation, and to confer with our real property negotiator regarding the Heritage Oaks Park property that's noted in our closed session agenda. Miss Sandin?
No, and we have no reportable actions.
Oh, and no action was taken on any of those items?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, that brings us then to Item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, the council is precluded by state law from taking action or having a discussion about items brought up under Item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other agenda item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available at the front door, and turn that card into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is an analog flip chart, and that simply indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. The clerk accepts the cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the staff report's completed and the council's questions or public testimony has begun, we don't take any additional speaking requests, so if you're here on a specific item, please be sure to get the request in, the card in as soon as you possibly can. We also recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can cause hives, nausea, and other symptoms of discomfort, and so we try, we do ask that folks try to avoid boos, or cat calls, or demonstrations, or even applause, and that we try to just maintain a civil discourse here in our chambers. So with that, we have just one request to speak under Item 1A, and that's by Gary Gray. And we also have a written submission by Mr. Gray as well. There's, at the base of the microphone, there's a little, if you see the little green light, come on there.
Okay, I got it. I'm the project manager of the St. Joseph boat out there. Now, the reason why it's not out there is because we got hassled by your police department, your sheriff's department, Sacramento, and if I would've went on the boat, I'd have been arrested by orders this council. You can't take a man's constitutional rights away from him, and you did. That's why I gave you that package a couple of months ago about the constitutional laws. You're the ones who made it a constitutional that goes to court, and I will see you in court coming up in a couple of months. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, so with that, then we're going to proceed to Item 1B, which is council communications assignments. Are there any reports or other communications this evening, Ms. Sandin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Water Resources Association of Yolo County met on June 19th. We approved a provisional budget, and we heard an update on water legislation and regulatory issues, including a proposal that would give the State Water Resources Control Board power to mandate water use reductions that can supersede local conditions and undermine water rights. The regional water authorities executive director, John Woodling, presented on this matter, and his agency, which we're a member, is strongly opposed, so that's advocacy on our behalf. Also, on June 19th, the Yolo Sub Basin Groundwater Agency held its inaugural meeting, and we finalized the JPA and elected to become the groundwater sustainability agency for the Yolo Sub Basin. I had the honor of being elected chair of the agency, and we handled a number of administrative items to get the agency set up and running. Our main task is to now develop the Yolo Sub Basin Sustainability Plan, which will be the focus for the next two years, and we're applying for a large grant to cover the bulk of the planning costs. On June 20th, Mayor Pro Tem Johansson and I, we co-chair the Age Friendly Advisory Committee, and we met that day and provided some final feedback on the draft Age Friendly Action Plan, and hats off to Mr. Robinson of our staff for all the heavy lifting he's been doing on that project, and that will come to council in July. We have one more meeting of the advisory committee, I think, before it comes to council. And we also heard the results of an AARP study on Californians in the workforce and challenges facing Californians with regard to housing and retirement, housing constraints and retirement savings, just in terms of looking forward to what future generations, as we're, as we're planning, we found the study and the results really helpful. Finally, yesterday, I participated in a groundbreaking and woodland of an 80-unit affordable service-enriched apartment project, which is a partnership between Mercy Housing California and Yolo County Housing, New Hope Community Development Corporation. Mayor Pro Tem Johansson was recognized for his work on the project as chair of Yolo County Housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sandin. Mr. Ladashma?
Thank you. This should be relatively brief, as on June 19th was the meeting. I participated as a board member of the Yolo Habitat Conservancy. We'll have a very good briefing of that by somebody much more capable than me on the status of the plans. I'm looking forward to getting that update today. But there were a couple of other actions regarding budgeting and the Conservancy moving forward on taking part in a borrowing now mitigation plan and strategy with, in Davis. So we're, the Conservancy is moving along and starting to take action on some of its core goals, so more to come on that later. Earlier today, we had a meeting of the West Sacramento Public Financing Authority, having to do with the EIFD, and today, we, I'm proud to say, we did approve the final resolution, which is the final act informing the city of West Sacramento's first enhanced infrastructure financing district. This was the result of many years of work by our staff and by his council on how we could further provide the city with tools to make improvements in our city, infrastructure improvements, and other public improvements in a post-redevelopment world. I want to thank staff for the great work they did on that. We did have, for the council's sake, there was some robust conversation around writing a policy on how we move forward on Measure G funds and on EIFD, going-forward strategies and policies around that. I think the chair was going to appoint a subcommittee out of that to work with staff and city council on adopting some policies on going forward on Measure G and EIFD, but more to come on that later, but it was a good day in that we got that enacted, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Roscoe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also relatively brief, I participated in the graduation for the Police Youth Academy on Friday, the 23rd, a program that was put on with, by the West Sacramento Police Department. There were a good group of kids that participated in this first annual event, and I just wanted to really express appreciation for the proactive efforts of our department in outreach into the community and providing opportunities for our youth to engage and consider public-sector careers, and I also understand that our fire department is equally engaged in, like, programs. On the 21st, I had an opportunity to speak in front of 350 young students across the river for the annual COPS and Kids Summer Camp, and the two experiences, both in one week, were pretty inspiring, and I look forward to seeing our communities' programs grow as we now embark upon the Summer Night Lights events in July. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Johansson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Yolo Housing met today. Couple things, we approved our current budget, operating budget for 2017, 2018, and also heard a number of presentations, too, where the agency was awarded the HUD National High Performer Public Housing Program Award, and this is, I think, the seventh time it's received this award. It also received an award for the National, the HUD National High Performer Housing Voucher Program. So all these basically are around housing agencies that are, you know, they're budgeted correctly, they have the proper safety procedures in place, and it's really, there's only a few that are awarded these programs in the country. And I commented today that the, you know, it's like every other meeting, we're getting these types of awards, but we really have a good, good staff at Yolo Housing that's providing it. So one of the programs that they're providing is a two-family self-sufficiency program. What that does is basically, if the folks in the housing agree to certain guidelines, like to get a certain specifications of an education, or a certain type of job, what the housing authority can do, and this is all a federal HUD program, is if there's any rent increases, they can take that increase and put it into an escrow that could be used for home buying later on in the future. So today, two of those families were graduates of this program, and they each received a down payment for a new home, and one person is a surgical assistant now at Sutter, another person graduated from SAC City. It's just a really good program to provide that type of incentive. So far, there's been 22 graduates of this program since 2003, and the total escrow for new home buying was about $300,000. Great program. That doesn't appear to be in jeopardy at the federal level at this point.
Great. All right, thank you. And a few things to report, assuming that Mayor Pro Tem Johansson reported on our participation in the New Cities Summit in Injonkorea at the last council meetings, is that correct? And I participated on panels on civic engagement, new approaches to civic engagement that are, that cities around the world might want to pay attention to, the alternatives and options that are out there, including some of the things that we're piloting here in West Sacramento, and our work on age-friendly communities was heavily highlighted by the World Health Organization, and to a session we got invited to at the last moment, but when we got there, they, the liaison from the World Health Organization said, "Oh, it's so exciting that West Sacramento is here because they're one of the world's leading cities when it comes to age-friendly policy and practices in implementation." I had said, I had mentioned that we were the second city in California to join the Age Friendly Network, and as they've said many times now, that we were, we were the first to actually launch it, though. We were the first one to actually do work, and there were a lot of cities around the world that were really interested in the work that we've been doing, that's been led by the departments of Mr. Robinson, and by, especially by Ms. Sandin and Mayor Pro Tem Johansson, and the task force of city commissioners that they lead, and sometimes it's easy, you know, when you have a meeting, the community center, the library are here, and we're just doing the daily work of getting it done, you may not realize that you're being, you're, you know, that work and the progress and the innovation, the commitment is being seen all around the world. I then also participated, was, as the one mayor in the world to participate in the Innovation Growth Lab in Barcelona, Spain, leading a conversation about inclusive economic development and how, how cities around the world, not so much learning from us, but learning at least from some of what are, some of our challenges, some of the strategies that we're undertaking, about what it means and how it's possible to have broad-scale economic development that is inclusive across a broad range of communities, and what does that really mean, and what does that look like, and what are some of the tools? And we did a series of simulations and experiments and other, other activities and tests of new approaches, you know, beyond the public hearing stuff, around how, how we could really achieve broad-based equitable development. So it was a, it was a great showcase for, for the, for the community, you know, repeatedly, West Sacramento was introduced as, you know, one of the world's most innovative cities, and it's, it sounded, it was ridiculous to me in Barcelona, as I'm sure it does as I'm saying it right now, but it's, it is the case. I just returned from the United States Conference of Mayors annual meeting, and I wanted to report a few things. One is we, we were asked to present on the city's progress on its work towards the Milan Food Pact. Council may recall in 2015, when we were invited to present, we were one of four cities, four American cities invited to present at the Global Expo, the World's Fair, in Milan, Italy, on what the State Department was characterizing as the four cities with the most interesting food innovations in the, in the world. We presented there, at that time, joined cities from mainly Europe, but from the rest of the world as well, in signing this thing called the Milan Food Pact, and it was a commitment around a series of policy objectives and initiatives that each of those cities would be undertaking, that was consistent with a set of objectives that we had already identified here locally. We are, I think, the next smallest city after us is a half a million people, so we're definitely the outlier in that group, but we were asked to report at the, at the annual meeting of the mayors on our progress in that work, and Mr. Winbrot from our, from our staff also participated, a day-long session of the mayor's food policies advisors, food policy advisors, and the other cities were, were impressed with the work, the comprehensiveness of the work that has been happening in our community, but I think also, very importantly, that we're one of the only places that is doing this work not as some sort of city master plan, you know, declaring that the following 12 things will happen in this sequence, but really trying to, whether it's through the Center for Land-Based Learning, or for, through the International Rescue Committee and the New Roots Farm, or many, many other partners, we're trying, we are trying to find ways to be helpful to people in the community that want, that are want to do and are ready to step up to do transformative work in the food system, and that was something that most of the other mayors hadn't presented on, so it was a, it was a good, it was a good session to showcase what we're doing nationally, us and Baltimore being the two. Similarly, the Brookings Institution, you may recall, a couple of months ago, I was in St. Louis for a tour of innovation districts. They've just released a report on, on innovation districts, and I think we have, I think Mr. Winbrot bought copies back, back for our staff, but it's, it's actually a very good primer and toolkit on how to approach the innovation district concept, and in the presentation of the, of the report, the Brookings Institution highlighted, I think, four cities in total. One of them was us for our potential as a food innovation center, and quote-unquote, our well-known work on food innovation across, you know, across the country, so another, another national kudos for the work that's happening here. Similarly, the South by Southwest reported, "To all of the mayors of the country, please come and join the most creative cities in the country, like Austin and West Sacramento." So I'm finally gone because this is a long trip, but it was remarkable to be in these variety of places where, where West Sacramento's small and large innovations are having, are attracting attention, and people who want to invest, you know, either want to move here, bring their companies here, you know, start a new idea, entrepreneurship here, and so our work is definitely having an impact. Also, the council knows I chair the Educational Workforce Committee for all the mayors in the U.S., and we had a deep session on automation, and the impact of automation and robots and artificial intelligence on the workforce, and particularly on its implications for how we do workforce development, and at some point, I hope to convene a session here in the city on this topic. It's a really critical one, and the estimates of the percentage of job losses due to automation and artificial intelligence are as high as 45 or 50 percent. Our workforce systems are not at all tool to be able to address that, and we are talking about jobs far beyond manufacturing automation, but paralegals, lawyers, real estate agents, and a whole bunch of other job qualifications as well. So we began some of that work at the national level as well. We toured the Future Bankers program at Miami-Dade College, which has, was promising, is a, is a potential option for us to pursue through the work that we're doing on the kids' home run and the badging and internship space and the college space, along with Future Ready. ARP is about to release a new publication, which they highlighted at the, at the conference, and on page 24 of the publication will be, again, a highlight of West Sacramento, the last, in their first publication a year ago, which Mr. Johansson's mother was featured in as part of the, what's been happening in West Sacramento on age-friendly policies. This one will be particularly highlighting West Sacramento's statewide leadership on affordable housing, and affordable housing, the sort of an affordable housing first policy, and I think you'll be pleased when you see it featured early in the book this time, and ARP continues to reinforce how much of a, of a model West Sacramento is for other cities across the country. I joined the climate mayors group. We have, on behalf of the, on behalf of the city, this is a group of mayors who have committed to continue to implement the, the policies, the objectives, and the programs of the, of the Paris Climate Agreement. I think there are now 500 of us around the country. This has its precedent in, when President Bush withdrew from the Kyoto Protocols a decade ago, we did exactly the same thing, and 1,000, 1,000 cities and mayors signed the same, a similar agreement, and were able to accomplish roughly 30 percent of the emission reductions that we're contemplating in Kyoto, because cities are such a significant contributor to climate emissions. It's not a huge policy change, it's not a policy change for us at all. It's already in part of our internal policy, it's part of our general plan, and it's part of our responsibilities under SB 375 and the State Air Resources Board, so it will not require us to do anything different, but it is a commitment that what we are doing already is fundamentally committed to fighting climate change and its impacts despite the action of the president. The Mayor Bloomberg announced a new innovation challenge, and we were one of the, we were one of the small cities in the first round, I think, five years ago, now to compete in the very first Bloomberg Challenge for cities. He announced a total of a $200 million initiative to support innovation and impact by America's cities, including funding for a new innovation challenge, and this one, this challenge is learned a lot from the first one in terms of helping cities like us with capacity, but also creating smaller grants at various stages of the process, leading to a potentially very large grant for innovation. It's innovation as, you know, as is construed in, in the innovation world, so not, sometimes folks think of innovation as like anything new or anything different, that's not what, that's not what we're talking about in this space, but I brought back the brochure for it. There's no cost for us to participate, I mean, in a direct sense, but I'm hoping to convene some community feedback and ideas, and then to be able to submit a competitive application for that, for those funds. And then lastly, from that meeting, we, we won the Pathways to, with a Purpose Award. Each year, the Conference of Mayors, with support of a philanthropic partner, holds a competition, a national competition for cities in the education and workforce space. Cities that have had, have had the best initiatives in terms of increasing the number of people in their communities who complete high-value degrees and credentials and certificates and other markers of workforce skills and college, college preparation, and we, 75 cities competed in this year's competition, and we won first place in the small-city category. It came with a check for $25,000 to, you know, support our work as well, but it also came with a lot of exposure to philanthropists and to others that were, were hoping to convert into additional support for the program, and just a big boost. I mean, it was, it created a lot of buzz in the Conference of Mayors, other cities who couldn't believe that this was possible, that the kids', it was for the kids' home run, that what is contained in the kids' home run, any one of its components would have been, you know, awesome, but the fact that we had linked all of these elements together in a comprehensive, integrated way was, was a big deal across the country, so the council got a lot of, a lot of, and the community got a lot of kudos for that work, and it also lead to additional resources. So that was the Conference of Mayors meeting. Also, since our last meeting, the Bike Share Policy Steering Committee met. We're still engaged in negotiations with potential sponsors for the system's full rollout after the, after the completion of the previous phase that's currently underway in Midtown, Downtown, and West Sacramento. We had originally had a commitment, we, we were required to have a sponsor in place by the end of last month in order to have SOBE, the provider, the operator, agree to launch the full system in November of this year. We haven't, we don't yet have that sponsor in place, so it's not clear whether we'll make the November date, but we're continuing to negotiate with SOBE and to, and to look for potential sponsors. The preview phase that's happening here is going well, it's getting good usage, and we have some limitations because we're not supposed to be marketing it. We're trying to preserve all the marketing value for the potential sponsor ultimately, so we're not, we're not intensively marketing, marketing the system, and it doesn't have enough coverage and density of bikes for it to be a useful alternative all the time for all sorts of trips, but given those, given those two caveats, it's, it's showing strong usage and strong usage here in West Sacramento. So that is my six weeks of reports. If we have no others, then I'd want to see as appointments to boards and commissions, and I do have an appointment, appointment to make, and that's of Peyton Early to the Parks Recreation and Intergenerational Services Commission, replacing another commissioner who was removed for absences. So Mr. Early is a, is a high school student, resident in our community, I know, several, several folks in the, in the room know his parents, or at least his mom, but active in, active in the community and has submitted his application, and I believe the council received a second copy of it this week. So I would appoint Peyton Early to that commission and ask if there's a motion to approve the appointment.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Roscoe, and second by Ms. Sandin. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the opposed, hearing done, that motion carries. That brings us to Item 2, which is presentation of the 2017 Summer Steps Internship Program.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Caitlin Miller, I'm with the city's Human Resources Division, and I'm here tonight to present on the 2017 Summer Steps Internship Program. So we have prepared a presentation for you. So up on the screen, the city received 392 applications for the 2017 Summer Steps Internship Program across the eight city departments that we have. We have spelled out the number of applications per department that we received, and up here is the information on all the city's interns. At this time, if I could have all of the 2017 Summer Steps interns stand that are in attendance tonight? So for some of them, this is the first council meeting that they've ever attended. Part of the Summer Steps Internship Program requirements was the digital badging aspect, and to earn their Summer Steps digital badge, one of the criterias was to attend a council meeting, as well as attend luncheon learns, conduct interviews with other city staff members, they have to watch a commission meeting, as well as their taking place, attending city tours across all the city facilities that we have to learn about different aspects of local government, and they also have to earn their specific department badge. So each of the departments and mentors have created certain tasks that their intern must complete before they can achieve this digital badge. So, thank you guys for standing. So at this time, that concludes my presentation. I'd like to open it up for any questions that you may have on the program.
This program, I think, was just, it's just today, the Institute for Local Government, I think, released a, you know, they, they put, they put a comprehensive webpage up about, about this program, and particularly how other cities might, you know, what the core components are so that other cities can, can learn, and so this, in a very, very short amount of time, the Summer Steps program has emerged as maybe the, maybe the best statewide model, certainly in the top two or three of, of programs of its kind, and that's a testament to the city manager, who's, you know, who's completely obsessed with this program. And that's a testament to the city manager, who is completely obsessed with this program, and the assistant city manager, Phil Wright, and especially Caitlin and her colleagues across the departments, who have implemented this program with just an incredible amount of enthusiasm and attention to, you know, to learning theory and to making it worthwhile, making it mean something later, inspiring young people to think about opportunities to work in the public sector in different ways and to help them as individuals. It's just been an extraordinary success. And so we definitely want to welcome the new class to a program that we're extremely proud of in the community, and we're proud of you for participating. And our hope is to give you as much of a head start on success as we possibly can in terms of building real-world experience with a paycheck in a real organization that's got, you know, all the complexities and the challenges and the fun and the great people. I have to warn you, not every organization is as wonderful as our staff and everything is, but it's a great start. And hopefully, we're sparking some, a chance for you to test your passions and, you know, probe what you're really interested in, see if working in the fire department's really as fun as we all imagined it was when we're fifteen or not, and see what it really means to, you know, to do payroll processing, just the full range of what a city's involved in, and to ignite your passion and apply some of the work that you're doing in school and in your other community service activities, and get a head start on future learning, whether it's in college or apprenticeship or in the military or into the workforce, that will look back on this experience and think, you know what, maybe working in the public sector, maybe working for a city, maybe working for your own city is something that you want to think about for your future, because we want you. We want the most talented, committed people in our community to think about serving your neighbors and your families here back at home. So congratulations on being selected in what was an extremely competitive process. Thanks to the department directors and all the department staff who put a lot of time just into the selection process, and I know battled with each other and have had to make some really, really tough choices. But we're really excited about the program once again. And thanks again, Caitlin, for all of the work that you've been doing on it.
Yes, thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks very much. I guess you're all -- normally, when we do a presentation, we then tell folks that we just had a presentation for you. You're free to go if you want to, because it's about to get boring. But apparently, your badge requires that you stay through the uninteresting parts. But it turns out, we do have a lot of very interesting things on our agenda tonight. And I think what you will find, if you listen between the lines, that even some of the most boring things are really important. Sometimes, I know when I first got elected, I didn't think that sewer stuff was all that interesting, or that, you know, the kind of surfaces that you used for a road that has a pothole, and it was really that exciting. But it turns out, there's big things all around City Hall, not just the building a ballpark or putting up a sculpture on this corner, but really all across the board. And so we've got plenty of items to whet your appetite tonight. All right. So then, with that, we now have the consent agenda item before -- consent agenda, which is items three through eighteen. We have a memo at our desk from the city manager identifying amendments to item four and twelve and fifteen. So those will be incorporated in the motion. So are there any items on consent that any member of the council wishes to remove, or any item for separate question or comment?
I'll move the recommended actions and the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. So you know further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. That brings us to item nineteen, which is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution seventeen dash forty-nine amending the book of city fees regarding refuse collection permit fees. Ms. Bennet.
Thank you. Got tall shoes on tonight. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Purpose of this item is to conduct a public hearing and consider adoption of Resolution seventeen four-nine amending the city book of fees regarding refuse collection permit fees. These changes are necessitated by the adopted fees that were approved in the city's waste hauling contract last year. This contract goes into effect this July first. And in that contract, we have a new franchise fee. It's been increased to twelve percent of gross revenues from its current nine point two percent. And we've added a new AB nine thirty-nine fee of three percent of gross revenues. The AB nine thirty-nine fee was added to the contract in order to secure a dedicated funding source for implementing the city's state-mandated waste reduction and recycling programs. And both of the budgets for those fees were adopted with the city's biennial budget at the June fourteenth council meeting. In addition to those two fee updates to this schedule, there's some other minor changes that were made. For example, we changed the term permit fee to franchise fee, since that better describes what that fee is. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions for Ms. Bennet before we open the public hearing? All right, thank you. Okay, then we're going to open the public hearing on item nineteen. We don't have any requests to speak, but because it is a legal public hearing, does anyone wish to address the council on item nineteen? Hearing done. We'll close the public hearing and return to the council for any further questions, discussion, or for a motion.
Just a quick comment. I know this is just the enactment of the -- this is just the enactment of the agreement we had made earlier. But I did want to say, because this is going into effect July first.
Correct.
And the new contract is, I think we're starting to publicize that now, that the new services begin July first. Is that --
That is true, yes.
Okay. And so, just again, good job on all this. I know I've heard some really positive reaction to the new services that are available. I think in my household, there was a -- they didn't understand, even though I talked about it, boring city council stuff, when you see the brochure, what services are available now, and the wide range of stuff, it is impressive. So thank staff for continuing to work on this. I know this is kind of the last act to get it all done, but I just want to make sure I made that statement, because it is going to affect in a week.
Thank you.
Ms. Roscoe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In addition, if I could ask, please, if you wouldn't mind outlining some of the new services that are being provided for those of us who are watching who may not have received the brochure.
Sure, no problem. So some of the things that we've added in this contract that are new are some appointment-based curbside collections of bulky waste, which now, previously, we had drop-off events for that. We've also added household collection or curbside collection of household hazardous waste. So people that have paint or even sharps, you know, chemicals and things like that, they can get that collected at their door. Both of those appointment-based programs, people are eligible to get two each year. And our year would be our contract year, which is July one to June thirtieth. We're also going to put in some pharmaceuticals kiosks. We still have to work out the details on that, but we'll hope to have at least one more kiosk placed at a pharmacy in town, so people can drop off pharmaceuticals for free. We're also doing some other things. Multi-family, they'll also get the bulky waste and household hazardous waste collection appointments, which they don't get now. That's really the big change, is really, is that curbside collection, so people don't have to go somewhere to drop off those big things.
And how do our residents know how to contact to make an appointment?
Well, we did send out a direct mailing recently. We've done some city highlights outreach. It's on our website. And because we're doing a shift right now from customer service being handled by our city staff to waste management staff, our front desk staff have been alerting people. We have some flyers out at the counter. And when they're taking phone calls, they've been just letting people know that moving forward, there's going to be some changes. But as we transition, our customer service staff will continue to take as many calls as they can to kind of get people used to that change in policy.
So the city of West Sacramento website will have that information?
That is as well, yeah, our website, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Protem Johansson.
Yeah, on the pharmaceutical kiosk, when do you think that's going to be up and running?
We're hoping to get input as soon as possible. Right now, we're trying to get in contact with some of the pharmacy managers. We've had a little challenge getting in contact with the right people. I think there's still a little apprehension about hosting the bins. But we've had a bin at the Jefferson Pharmacy that's actually currently paid for by Yolo County, and it's been there for, gosh, several years now. And they haven't had any issues at all with having that container there. And the idea is that having the container in your pharmacy will bring people to the store and actually spend some money. Even if they're not buying medicine from you, they might buy Band-Aids or some other item while they're there.
So the containers are in the store, they're not outside?
Correct, yeah. They have to be inside, in the pharmacy area.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're secure medicine bins that they're one-way. People can't break into them. They've been built really well to prevent theft and things like that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, feedback, just on the appointment-based curbside for bulky waste in particular, but also for the household hazardous waste, the feedback's been super positive. Nobody liked having to -- nobody ever seemed to even dream, they just hated it, that you had to, you know, wait, look out for when the date was there, and then go queue in line forever in order to do it. So it's a simple, but really, really valuable step forward.
Thank you.
Especially for those residents who don't have the ability to take their bulky waste. They don't have the transportation or the wherewithal, either even physically. We have some residents who, you know, unfortunately, have, you know, waste that they can't get rid of because they don't have the capacity to, due to physical limitations or otherwise, to get rid of it. So I think this is a really positive step, and thank you so much for bringing that to our attention and to our city.
Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you. So we've already closed the public hearing, so is there a motion on the resolution?
I'll move it.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem Johansson. Seconded by Ms. Ledesma. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done. Motion carries. Item twenty is a public workshop by Yolo Habitat Conservancy on the public review draft, Yolo Habitat Conservation Plan, Natural Community Conservation Plan, and public review draft, environmental impact report, environmental impact statement. Ms. Hamilton.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I wanted to just introduce this item. It is a major milestone for this item to come before you for public comment during the ninety-day public review draft. And so tonight, we do have Petrea Marchand from the Conservancy, as well as her environmental consultant, Sean Beckta, from Ascent to do a presentation. They have a PowerPoint. And this item did go before both the Environment and Utilities Commission and the Planning Commission in the middle of June, and they each provided comments and questions within their respective policy areas. So with that, I will turn it back to you and ask that you invite Petrea.
All right. Ms. Marchand.
Good evening, Mayor Cawalden, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you on the public review draft of the Habitat Conservation Plan and Natural Community Conservation Plan. For the benefit of the public, I just wanted to remind everyone that the Yolo Habitat Conservancy is a joint powers agency that consists of all four cities and the county of Yolo, as well as UC Davis as an ex-officio member. And as Director Hamilton said, tonight's presentation is a milestone. We released the public review draft of both the plan and the EISAIR on June first for a ninety-day public comment period that closes August thirtieth, 2017, and we welcome comments from members of the public. The Yolo Habitat Conservancy is accepting comments as the lead agency under the California Environmental Quality Act, but the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is also accepting comments as the lead under the National Environmental Policy Act. So I wanted to make sure that the public's aware that both agencies are accepting comments on both the plan and the EISAIR. So very quickly, for the benefit of the public, I wanted to remind everyone what a habitat conservation plan and a natural community conservation plan is. So a habitat conservation plan is the planning document that is required for the issuance of incidental take permits by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And that incidental take permit will cover all development in the city and county general plans for a fifty-year period, infrastructure, housing development, everything that's in your general plans. So rather than having to go to the agencies for a permit, you will be going to the Yolo Habitat Conservancy for a permit, and it represents a significant change in the approach to mitigation in Yolo County. A natural community conservation plan is the state equivalent of the habitat conservation plan. It is also an incidental take permit, and the document supports that incidental take permit. The primary benefits of this new permit and this new approach to regional conservation and permitting is that increased local control, improved and increased species conservation, and a streamlined permitting process, which I know is especially important in West Sacramento, as well as our other cities, to make sure that there's some stability and certainty associated with the process through which endangered species act permits are processed. Our plan area is the county of Yolo, and we also have a small slice of Solano County, which includes part of Putea Creek, because we will be focusing some of our conservation in Putea Creek. The plan, as I mentioned, covers all of the activities in the general plan, which totals nineteen thousand acres, and is shown in the orange and on this map. And in return for that permit, we will be conserving thirty-three thousand acres over fifty years. And priority areas identified on this map, those priority areas are Putea Creek, Cache Creek, and the Yolo Bypass. And we will be working primarily with farmers and landowners who have agricultural land to preserve agricultural land in perpetuity. And the primary restriction that we will be requesting on that agricultural land is the prevention of conversion to orchards and vineyards. So the majority of this thirty thousand acres is going to continue to be working farmland, but we'll be preventing the conversion to orchards and vineyards.
Petrea, before you leave, I was just asking, the orange, or whatever the color that's denoting where permits will be, you anticipate permits will be needed for development activity?
Yes, so it's, we worked with city and county staff to identify where the development in the general plans is that has not yet occurred. And so that will be what this permit covers. An important point is that the city and the counties are not, the cities and the county are not locked into the location of that development, but the take permit is based on the number of acres.
And you probably don't know the stuff of their head. You wouldn't happen to know what is the development that is right on our border on the south?
I do not know.
Okay.
We can maybe, maybe Director Hamilton knows.
The permit also covers flood protection activities.
Okay.
So it's likely related to the flood protection work.
Gotcha. Okay, that's better than a Walmart. Thank you.
Yes, we do cover all public infrastructure projects, too. So thank you, Director Hamilton, for that answer. So that's, this is, again, the conservation that we'll be pursuing over the course of the fifty-year permit period. We are covering twelve covered species, and the most important of those, and the ones which will be doing the most conservation over the fifty-year period, are the western buring owl, the Swanson's hawk, the giant garter snake, and the valley elderberry longhorn As I mentioned in the beginning, we are replacing the existing approach to endangered species act permitting with a new streamlined approach. This is a conceptual model that shows what the process can look like now. It's not always this difficult, but in general, when the development application is submitted to a local agency, and it requires an endangered species act permit, you have to coordinate both the location and the amount of mitigation with both the state and the federal government. And that can lead to a lot of discussions that take time and resources and take away from the actual goals of the project. We are going to be replacing that with our regional HCP/NCCP approach. Starts with the development application. Project proponent will still go to your local planning department, but instead, they will be working with the Yolo Habitat Conservancy to ensure consistency with the plan. The developer will pay a fee, and the project is permitted. Essentially, what you're doing with this plan, and why it takes so long and so expensive, is that you're getting pre-approved mitigation for fifty years. And for that, you get a quicker and more efficient process to the permit. It's also better from a conservation perspective to have this type of a regional approach. And essentially, right now, when you're acquiring mitigation, you're doing it project by project in small parcels. And with the HCP/NCCP regional approach, we get to aggregate the fees, purchase larger parcels, and use biological criteria to determine where those parcels should be for the benefit of the species. We're also going to be focusing on multi-species conservation easements, rather than a giant garter snake easement here and a Swanson's hawk easement here. So there's significant benefits from a habitat perspective as well. As with the current approach to mitigation, which does currently require developers and public agencies to pay fees, the Yolo HCP/NCCP will also be charging fees. The difference in this particular case is that we're moving away from a species-by-species mitigation approach and a species-by-species cost approach as well. So right now, if you have a development project and it requires Swanson's hawk mitigation, you pay a Swanson's hawk fee. If it also requires giant garter snake mitigation, you have to go purchase credits from a giant garter snake bank. Our fee covers all twelve species. So for the land cover fee of eleven thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars per acre, all of your mitigation for all twelve species is taken care of. If you do impact wetlands, which is similar to the existing process now, there is an additional fee that the Yolo Habitat Conservancy will charge, because wetlands restoration and mitigation is more expensive. And those fees range from forty-nine thousand to sixty-nine thousand dollars an acre. If your project has a temporary effect, we have a separate fee for temporary effects on habitat as well, but that means that we can also help you move projects forward that have temporary effects on the environment. It is one of the permit findings for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife that you have to both identify the costs and funding for meeting all of those costs of a habitat conservation plan. So the total costs are three hundred and seventy-one million over fifty years. And the majority of those costs are associated with establishment of the reserve. There's also funding for management and monitoring, as well as plant administration and restoration. From a funding perspective, the fees that I -- From a funding perspective, the fees that I mentioned will cover the majority of those costs of the program. State and federal funding is a very significant component of the program as well, because this plan will conserve habitat above and beyond mitigation. In order to conserve habitat above and beyond mitigation, this agency will be applying for grants from the state and federal government on a very aggressive schedule. So about $78 million over 50 years in state and federal money will need to come into this program to be successful under this permit process. One of the most unique, and I think probably noteworthy, elements of our funding strategy is the local match. We do have three local agencies that will be working with the Conservancy to develop projects through which they can contribute funding. That's the City of Davis's open space program, the Yolo County Cache Creek Resources Management Program, and Solano County Water Agency's Lower Pewter Creek Coordinating Program. Those programs will not change their priorities for the Yolo Habitat Conservancy. The Conservancy will be bringing projects to these agencies that are consistent with their priorities and asking them to partner with us. And over the course of 50 years, we have to come up with about $45 million in projects that they want to partner with. What I think is a really unique and important part of this program, because it also ensures that this agency is working with other local governments and other organizations who have similar goals. I'm not going to go through all these member agency actions, but I have this slide just to remind you that I'm going to be back. In the fall, there will be actual actions that the city council has to take as a permittee under this plan. It's not just the Yolo Habitat Conservancy that is responsible for this permit, it is each city and the county of Yolo. So I will be coming back to each jurisdiction to be asking you to approve each of these actions once we've completed the public comment period and we're in the final stages. Timeline is as follows. We are, when I, when my team inherited this program in 2012, I estimate we were about 20% complete. I think we're now about 95% done, we're about a year away from completion. As I said, the comment period ends at the end of August, and then we will be incorporating comments and coming back to you in the fall, hoping to submit a draft by the end of the year. And then the only thing we'll be waiting for is permit issuance. We don't know yet how long it will take the wildlife agencies to issue those permits, but we're hoping for mid to late 2018. So with that, I'm going to turn it over for a brief presentation by our EISAIR consultants, since that is also an important component of this presentation tonight.
Well, Mayor, council members, thank you. My name is Sean Becta with the Set Environmental. We are contracted by the Yolo Habitat Conservancy to prepare the EISAIR. We are, participated in the third-party agreement with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, who's the lead agency under NEPA. So we're serving both agencies, preparing an environmental evaluation document that covers both laws, CEQA and NEPA. So this is typical of the public review, or environmental review process. There's a public involvement component, and so part of the meetings and the meetings that we're going out and doing is to accept public comments, in part on the draft EISAIR, primarily looking for comments on the content, the analysis, not typically related to the merits of the project. This is just pointing out that the process and the intent of the EIS, there's a slide for NEPA, we evaluate the impacts, we inform the public and the decision-makers, we analyze the alternatives, and we engage the public and see comments, which is what we're doing now. It's a joint document. We're also covering CEQA, very similar. CEQA and NEPA are actually written at the same time. Many of the same people were shuttling between Washington, D.C. and California at that time. And, and the only difference is, or the primary difference is a requirement to identify mitigation measures. Fish and Wildlife Service wanted to point out the difference, or the interaction between the Endangered Species Act and NEPA. So the issuing of the permit is the action that is triggering the NEPA analysis. There's the Endangered Species Act permit, and the NEPA analysis evaluating the environmental effects of issuing that permit. Similar applies to the California Endangered Species Act and CEQA. The, the environmental analysis on a HCP is a little different from your typical project, where you're looking at what's the existing condition on a project site, and what is the future condition with the building there. In this case, what we're evaluating is a different permitting mechanism. There's the existing Endangered Species Act permitting mechanism that Petrea described, and then there's the new mechanism with the HCP. What is difference between those two, from an environmental and physical perspective, is primarily the implementation of the conservation strategy. And so a lot of the focus of the environmental impact analysis looks at the elements of implementing that strategy, running the preserve system, establishing the preserve system. Looked at a typical suite of issue areas in the environmental analysis. We had two issue areas where we had significant environmental effects. Land use was basically a situation where the Solano HCP, that's also in process, has some covered activities, some, some potential activities related to water infrastructure in Yolo County, which are inside areas that are being considered in the Yolo HCP for habitat conservation. So we were very conservative, although it was very unlikely that clearing culverts or clearing irrigation ditches may, may have adverse effect on implementing the Yolo HCP. We identified that potential conflict as a potential significant environmental effect. Mitigation is very easy, just make sure both entities coordinate and collaborate so that there isn't a conflict. The second is agricultural impacts. There's about 900 acres of habitat restoration or creation, primarily wetlands associated with the HCP. About 700 of that is anticipated to be on agricultural land, so ag land is converted to a non-ag use. About 200 acres on grassland that we anticipated, at least some of which could be grazing land, another conversion. There is not a way to create new ag land, so we took a conservative approach. And in the context of this community in Yolo County, the loss of 700 acres of ag land, we considered a significant and unavoidable impact, even though in the context of the HCP, there's going to be preservation of 17,000 acres of ag land, still there's not the creation of new ag land to compensate. We looked at three alternatives, the no-action alternative, which is really the continuation of the existing condition as far as endangered species act permitting. Then we looked at a scenario where what if there was even less take of endangered species? So looked at some areas that had high occurrences of multiple covered species and said, what if we took some of these areas and had, didn't allow take, but still had the same conservation strategy? So less take, same conservation was that particular scenario. And then another scenario where we pulled out some areas and said, what if they just don't participate in the HCP and they continue on with the existing process as far as how they get endangered species act permits? As you'd expect, the reduced take alternative, less, less take but same benefits was the environmentally superior. There's some concerns about whether that's economically feasible as far as the extra fees you'd need to charge per an acre on the remaining development. All three action alternatives were superior to the no-action alternative, in that you get the benefits to the, to the biological resources and benefits from other resources and for other areas, such as, say, public services and utilities, the effect is basically neutral. So there was a beneficial effect overall on the action alternatives. The public review process, so this is going to be familiar to, to all of you, but for others who may be watching, we've gone through scoping, the draft EISAIR is what is out right now, we're in the public review period, we've been going through a series of meetings. Petrea will talk about that a bit. After we receive comments, we'll prepare a final EISAIR responding to those, all those comments. For those familiar with CEQA, the final EISAIR may be a little different in that NEPA typically requires a reprinting of the entire document, so the final will look very much like the draft with an added appendix for the responses to comments. Then the NEPA action by the service is called a record of decision, and then the typical CEQA action of certification of the EIR and consideration of project approval. And so I'm going to hand it back to Petrea on the comment process.
So this is the last slide, and just quickly, for members of the public, we are accepting both written and oral comments, and we have a court reporter at a meeting tomorrow night if people are interested in, in coming and having their comments recorded. And so with that, this is a list of all the public meetings, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Before we take questions, Mr. Ledesma is our, is the city's representative on the Conservancy.
Yes. I would like to make some comments. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Petrea. I think by now, everybody has had a chance to meet Petrea and the staff, the team that has worked on this plan for the past five years, is that, what has it been, Petrea? To get it to this point, and it's, it's, it is a major milestone in this organization's history to get to this point. As Petrea pointed out earlier, when, when we all inherited it back in 2011 to 2012, it's about 20% done. I didn't think we even knew at that point if it was at 20%. That was part of the task I think we had at that point. But we committed, and we got to this point, five years later, to being 95% there with the EIR/ERIS review, and as well as the plan being published. And I think it's important to know what we did. In 2013, we issued the draft document, which was our first sort of blush, and that, I think, kind of took us all aback in terms of what the price tag was. I think it was around $500 million price tag, covering 32 species, and we had a lot of work to do to kind of work with the agencies to do that, to get it to, again, the 12 species, to what you saw today is 300, and I think a very scalable to our, what we do here in Yolo County, $370 million. So again, we've come a long way to kind of progress this from kind of a, maybe a high-minded exercise to actually a really pragmatic but groundbreaking plan because of the way we did it and what we're, what's in the plan. So I'm, I'm super proud of what, what, where we are in terms of the plan itself. I think it is groundbreaking in a lot of ways by the way we leverage our natural resources and agricultural lands here in Yolo County as a way to mitigate and protect species habitat. But I'm more importantly, more proud about how we did it, and that is by the organization, the leadership of Petrea, and the rest of the Heidi SEs back there, people that have been working on this for a number of years, including our members of the board, because it was just five years ago that we were questioning this whole agency, this whole JPA. And we were able to kind of bring it to this point with, I'm happy to report to taxpayers here, we were making contributions, but this, this JPA is run extremely efficient, cost-effective. We have been scraping by on, on pennies sometimes. The budgets were always very thin, but we managed, and that was in, in pure direction of where we were at the time in post-recession cities. All of us were feeling the same pain, but we all held hands and committed and said, we're going to do this, and we did it with that in mind. We also did it on a tight timeline. We did it in five years, we were able to take it from a draft document, narrow it down to what it is today. And that was a tremendous effort, lots of negotiating with the parties. And I think that's the last part we did, the way we did it, the partnership we had with the three other cities, winners, Davis Woodland, as well as Yolo County and UC Davis. Worked, we all worked together on this very cohesively. I think that that board is one of the more engaged boards that I sit on, how we work together to make things happen. And when you're a chair or vice-chair of that board, we are working, Petrea put us to work. And in addition, the city staffs, I want to thank Marty and the staff here, because there are times we all leveraged, Charlene, of course, leveraged each other's staffs to make sure we could kind of be efficient, and so I want to thank them. And then, of course, the partners of the state and feds, I think that was one of the real nice, bright spots. We got to this point because we had an amazing partnership with the state and federal government. They understood where we were as an organization, the imperative to get the plan done on time, under budget. They understood really clearly what Yolo County was trying to do. They may have disagreed at points, but we got to a point where we, we saw the win-win and benefit of doing this all, and so I think we have a newfound partnership with the state and feds, which is why this moved along so fast. There were commitments by people who you would never think, when you think of government work being done, that we're working weekends, nights, to review drafts, get, get comments back to Petrea and back to the team about where we need to go next. And that was real commitment by people that we really, we wouldn't think had it. So, and our team was always, Petrea and her team have done a marvelous job pushing this forward. And so I couldn't be more proud of where this is. This is the time where we get the public comment, so we're not quite done yet, we've got work to do. But hopefully, the rest of the council sees the value of the work that's been done. I think it's been worth our investment of time, money, and effort over the past five years to kind of get this reconstituted and get this to a place where it's actually at an implementation, just about at an implementation stage. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity, and thank you, more importantly, Petrea and team for getting us this far.
All right, questions? Mayor Protem Johannes?
Yes, just a couple, or actually one. So thank you for the good work, you and the board, council member Ledesma and the board, and putting together a really good plan in such a short period of time. The, it looks like some of the fundings from federal sources, and also there's a regulatory framework from the federal government. So is there, is there any risk with any change of policy or funding on the viability of this, or has that been considered? I haven't been following, it's more of the U.S. Fish and Game.
Yeah, it's the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. There's always risk when it comes to state and federal funding, because as you know, it's appropriated annually. The good news is that the state has invested really heavily in habitat conservation, and Proposition 1 still includes significant funding for which HCP and NCCPs are a priority. So I'm anticipating in the first five years, which is really about as far out as you can see with some state and federal funding sources, that there will be a lot of opportunities to secure funding. So it's going to be my recommendation to the board and the, and the new executive director to apply for as much of that state funding as possible in the early years, to get out ahead of that requirement. And there also has been support from both sides of the political spectrum in Washington, D.C., for continued support of these plans because of the combined economic benefits and habitat conservation benefits. So right now, the Habitat Conservation, California Habitat Conservation Planning Coalition is advocating for maintaining funding in the federal budget, and so far has been successful. So we're hoping that while there is still risk, that there will be a sufficient funding to apply for in implementation. But it's something to keep an eye on.
All right, thank you.
Of course, it's California, there's a, there's actually a Habitat Conservation Coalition. All right, Mr. Ledesma?
No, I was just going to comment, one of the things that we've instituted in our board is having a finance subcommittee, which somehow I found myself on, but it's to help answer some of these questions. Board members will have to be involved in continuing to find, help the executive director and staff continually find that, bridge that gap, or get out ahead of that. So I think that's one of the things we are focused on.
Ms. Andine?
I too would like to thank Mr. Ledesma and Ms. Marshawn for the work you've done to bring us here, and I know, I know today is really about getting the word out so that the public comment can be received on this draft EIR. I would say I really appreciate the conservative approach that was described by the consultant in terms of taking, when there's multi-agencies, I think it's better, I think, to err on the side of being as conservative as one can be approaching this, so, so I for one appreciate that approach. I did have a question, just in terms of all, that's a whole series of, of course, getting out in different, you've come, you've come here, I think this is the third time to West Sacramento, or maybe the fourth from that list of meetings. I noticed, just in terms of a different approach, most of them are going to city councils or agencies, and, and Davis, for example, looks like it's just a public meeting. So I just, I just was, I was just curious to picking that approach rather than, and Davis is going to their city council and doing that, I just, I just was curious.
Yeah, it's a good question. We, we worked with individual board members and city staff and let them choose how they wanted us to approach their community. And in the case of the City of Davis, they preferred to have a community meeting at the senior center and not go to the city council, although we have reserved a spot just in case, because it's, it is the City of Davis.
Thank you.
Just to Mr. Johannes's question, which was about funding, I think that also the actual standards and processes are also now on the table. To what extent, so the underlying framework of the Endangered Species Act and how it is applied, and some of the questions, some of the issues with ESA implementation and interpretation that have led to the need for habitat conservation plans may actually get answered in a more direct way in the reauthorization or in the regulatory review that the White House is, is leading. I'm not optimistic about it, but they are asking us about exactly these sorts of things. Is the, does the plan, is the plan flexible as the regulatory framework of the federal or the state agencies exist, or are we, or is, does it sort of lock into place in, in the equivalent form of like a consent decree or a common agreement between us that we're going to do exactly what the, what the, what the regulations are today by mutual agreement, whether or not they are the regulations tomorrow?
I would like to actually research that a little bit more and get back to you. We are, by adopting this plan, agreeing to this conservation and this framework. You can amend the plan, it's expensive and time-consuming to do, so you don't do it lightly. So I think it would, I would benefit from just researching that a little bit more than, and then providing you with information.
Great. Yeah, I mean, a corollary example is the revocation of the Waters of the United States definition by EPA, that, you know, just essentially in almost an instant, it changes a significant amount of the, of the, you know, what is even covered by, I think, by acts similar to this, Waters of the U.S. is a separate, it's a separate legal framework from, from the Endangered Species Act, but the readiness of the White House and potentially the Congress more fundamentally to, to do some major surgery on either the, the underlying law or the regulatory and the practices and the guidance that are issued out to the regions is not, it's not, it's easy to foresee that happening, whether actually they're able to bring it to conclusion or not, not clear, but so it would be great if you could give us some sense of what, what that looks like. I also want to I also want to thank Mr. Lidesma for the, for the work on this and the, and the board and our partners. I mean, it's, it's, in some ways, it's poetic that the Summer Steps interns are here, because this was, I was our first representative to the Habitat Conservation Plan Joint Committee from the various cities and the county in 1997. So the, we began, although we've talked about how fast this was and how thankful to all the agencies for their speedy work, in some sense, this plan, the work on this, the announcement that we're about to do this is older than, than most of our Summer Steps interns. And it's, you know, it's, 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 all, all along, it's been a sobering, you know, reminder about how, how we get, sometimes we've gotten in this ticket and whether we would have done it in 1990, whether we would have initiated this in 1997, if we thought 20 years later, we would be, you know, voting on the DIR in order to potentially start implementing it in 2018. So it's been, it's been a tough, you know, it's been a tough, a tough journey, a lot of lessons that I think we've learned, or I hope we, we are learning about, about inter-agency collaboration and some of the trade-offs that are involved when, when we all get together and, and all those other things. But the, but the amount of the sheer force of will efforts that you and, and Mr. Lidesma and his colleagues on the board have undertaken in order to rescue something that, that seemed absolutely totally dead after 15 years of work is really remarkable. So thank you, thank you so much for, for your leadership and your doggedness on, on making this a reality. All right, so we've received the presentation, we have no request for a comment on this, and it's, we have no other action to take. So that concludes our work on item 20. That brings us to item 21, which is consideration of Measure E, annual funding categories and appropriations budget for fiscal years 2017, 18, and 2018, 19.
Hope I don't need those papers. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have a PowerPoint that'll come up in a second, but as staff promised during the budget process, we are here tonight to present staff's recommendations for Measure E allocations. In a sense, another noteworthy move forward for the city. See if I can figure out how to use this thing properly. We rolling? Yes, we're rolling. We thought we'd start simply by reminding citizens and council of what Measure E was, and this is the language right out of the ballot measure. So the purpose of Measure E was for initiatives such as repairing roads and building, maintaining bike, pedestrian trails, reducing homelessness's community impacts, improving educational career opportunities for youth, enhancing internet access, uses smart technologies. So this was the, the measure that was approved by the voters on November 8th. Oops, wrong way, very sensitive. On October 19th, staff at council's direction brought some funding target suggestions to the council. I think these actually came from the council. And so the funding targets initially were these numbers here totaling $3.4 million. At a subsequent meeting on November 16th, then council member.
Kristoff.
Kristoff, sorry, how quickly you forget. It's because I'm closer to his age than I like to admit. On November 16th, at his request and council's approval, we added $100,000 for other public safety. So that left us at $3.5 million in targets. Finance staff then reviewed what we believed we would receive in revenue, and that was $3.329 million. So, there we go. So we had a projected shortfall of about 171,000, looking at what we thought we would be receiving versus the, the targets. We also had, this measure started in April, so we had a little bit of money that we projected coming in, in fiscal year 1617. Some of you may remember, this is a bit disappointing, that the number was going to be 800,000. We got our Measure E money for April, and we've revised that number down to 580,000 because we did not receive as much sales tax Measure E revenue as we thought we would receive. We had, staff had brought to council, and council had approved a commitment of 250,000 from 1617 for some of the yearly initiations of the Kids Home Run portion of the Measure E. So we were left with about $330,000 in what we believe will be uncommitted Measure E money from 1617. So based upon the slight discrepancy between the funding targets and the projected revenues, we took the items and we just reduced them proportionally, each one of them very, very slightly, to get the various functions all funded and the $3.329 million covered. And then staff is proposing that, and this is the staff's proposal, obviously, to the council, staff is proposing that for the other public safety, we utilize $200,000 from the uncommitted 1617 revenues that, that we are projecting coming in to get us to the 3429 total. That would, that would leave about 130,000 in uncommitted funds from 1617. And the reason for staff's recommendation not to simply fund the other initiatives at their original level is that the 1617 is not ongoing revenue, and normally staff doesn't recommend using one-time money to fund an ongoing commitment, and the commitment to the road, bicycle, smart city, et cetera, all those are ongoing commitments of Measure E. So that's why we reduce the number. We simply use the, the excess money from 1617 to fund for two years, the public safety component. The hope, obviously, is that when we get to the next two-year budget, we see some increases in those Measure E funds, and we'll be able to fully fund all of the various areas, including public safety at that time. The, the next slides, I'm going to go through fairly quickly and then be, obviously take questions the council may have. On all of the, each department went through the areas that they are the lead-in to come up with some proposed projects for the Measure E funds. The ones that are in orange are ones that staff is saying to council, we intend to come back to the council for approval on these specific projects. And obviously, one of the things that the council has made very clear and staff understands is as we look to which projects we will bring forward first, we will look to those projects that we can find other sources of revenue to maximize the use of Measure E, whether it's state or federal or other grant opportunities. So we have the, the road rehab projects listed there. We have, as you can see, virtually all of the bike, pad, trail projects are going to come back to council. We have the smart city projects that the vast majority will be coming back with actual allocations, but these are the projects being recommended. We have the reducing the impacts of homelessness that, again, most will, the, some will come back, most of those are actually being approved, as you know. The, the main focus here of the additional revenue is to be able to do the, the cleanup and enforcement every two weeks instead of once a month, which was what we, what we said to council when we initially started doing the homeless cleanup enforcement, that we had some money, that we could do it once a month, and with Measure E, we can increase the frequency of which we're doing that. And then with the Kids Home Run, as you can see, the orange is in the top because Mr. Winbrot, who's the lead on this particular item, intends to come back to the council in September with a, a full Kids Home Run update and, and recommendations for allocating of money. Like, as I said, each of the department heads that is responsible or lead for one of the areas are here tonight to answer any detailed questions. I will answer anything to the best of my ability before bringing them up. And here's the reducing homelessness and the other public safety items. You can see those will be coming back to council when the programs are actually presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time, as, as I indicated, department heads are here as well.
All right, Mr. Representative Johannesen.
Well, thank you. So on these, there's a lot of items that are really specific that are, you know, if it's a, you know, bright product, bike routes, bike lanes, things like that, that are really specific. Some of these are really, at this point, kind of conceptual. So I guess my question is, when you come back, for example, let's take smart cities. There's, I think, two items. You said one is going to be the innovation technol, and technology team, and the other was, there's one more in there, I think, that you were going to do without coming back to council. It wasn't one of the ones in the orange. Getting these up quickly, so. So, so, you know, I think on this, to what extent is the council going to have input? When you do come back with some specific items on, for example, the smart city, is it going to be, okay, we plan to do Wi-Fi expansion in this neighborhood, we intend to do education, broadband education this particular way? So it's going to be specific projects, or is it going to be, you know, kind of what the scoping is going to be? Because I think one of the problems is, you know, for, for example, prepare a smart city plan, that kind of encapsulates all of this.
Sure.
And until we actually see what the plan is, and a lot of these become more implementation steps, it, it seems to be kind of premature. Yeah, I will, that's a very good point. The smart, and Mr. Robinson can step up if, if I don't speak accurately, but clearly in this area, the preparing of the smart city plan is step number one, and will be the first thing that will be undertaken. And then these other projects that are all the, the ones currently that their city staff is looking at, the smart city plan will really dictate to a certain extent which of these we do and in what order, or if they're the right ones, or if there's something else that comes out of the plan. In addition, it will be what other, where we have opportunities to leverage the money will be factors. But the final decisions on each of these will, will come to the council, will come back with staff's recommendation, the reasons why. And I'm sure that the smart city plan will be one of the first things. John, would you like to comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so, so the idea here was to have, was to work on the plan, but then also to start with some pilot projects that would be informed by, by the plan as well. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a two-pronged approach, where we would do pilot projects in some areas that are either aligned with existing council policies or which seem part of smart city best practices elsewhere, but then at the same time to work towards implementing, getting a plan in place that would drive the expenditures in year two of the budget and then going forward.
Yeah, because I think, I mean, there's going to be a lot of policy discussion, I think, even at that stage, like, is the direction going to be like, like an app-based smart city approach? Is it going to be, you know, open data? And there's all kinds of ways that this, you know, can, can permeate, or, or, you know, directions they can go.
Right, yeah, and we, we tried to be careful not to, not to predetermine that, because that's a whole, that's a whole council policy discussion. So that's why you see the allowance for the second year of the budget, just being basically a plug number that would be subject to direction from the council and being informed by the plan.
Okay, yeah, that's good. That's it, thanks.
I want to pick up on this, this question, because I think, I have some specific questions too, but this, there's, there's two kind of architectural level issues around, around this I want to highlight at the, at the outset. One is the targets, right, the, where we are proposing to appropriate all the dollars up to the targets. The public safety piece, if you go back and look at the tape, which I did, when we included it, we knew we were going over the target. This was not like, oh my God, we, how did we do that? We're now over. What we said pretty much across the board was, that's fine, because these are not appropriate, these are not spending targets, these are upper bounds, and we will be looking for, what are the best leveraging opportunities? And so it may be in some years, there aren't any in the mobility frame, but there's some great opportunities on the, on the reducing homelessness frame or whatever. So that, so that we, we are not committing to these dollar figures and, and amusingly, we specifically said, we don't want department directors to start thinking that they now own this much money per year for trails, or this much money per year for, for age, for age-friendly initiatives, or whatever. That was, that was specifically in that conversation because of that. So the, the targets were intended to go over 100% because we weren't intending to have them be actual allocations in advance. They were supposed to be, and I'll get to this in a second, available for, for venture opportunities, for leveraging opportunities. So I wanted to say that first. But second is, I think, I feel like in some ways, we're backing into the actual policies, the objectives, the performance, and the, and the budget policies that go along with them, trying to figure this out as we're, as we're going. And I feel like as a policy, as a policymaker up here, I'm kind of volleying, I mean, I'm up at the net and, and these things, the projects are all coming at me, and I'm trying to figure out, well, what's the policy lens here? And essentially, that's the question that you were asking. Not so much like, what is the master plan? Because that almost runs up against the whole notion of being, having funds that are available for these entrepreneurial opportunistic ventures and leverage, you know, grant comes out and we, we want to be able to apply, we didn't know about it two, a year and a half ago when the last two-year budget was done. We want to be, we want to have the ability to act and to move on that. So that, so the, the notion of a, of a, of a full plan, like we're building an alternative CIP, isn't something, for me at least, I'm interested in doing, because it doesn't accomplish that. But I've been thinking about this, you know, a little bit more since the agenda came out, around how the, these buckets, these categories are, they're not the same, one to the other. And, and I've been, I guess I've been struggling trying to apply a common rubric across each one of them. And, and maybe the answer is that they shouldn't, that there are a set of these, these that are what you might call capital accelerator funds, you know, it's the road rehab one, the trail pot is in this category as well, where we have funding that's, that is there to, to accelerate our capital ambitions and looking for opportunities to, to leverage even more money with those funds. So they're not, they're, they have a specific purpose, but they're not like, it's not like we've just found more money to put into the parks fund, or into the traffic fund, or into the road fund. And so we're just going to go down that same list that we've always had in the CIP. That's not what this is. On road rehab, I should say it is. Right, road, road rehab is driven by the pavement condition index. But for trails, it's not just a, a funding source to replace the fact that we don't have any money in the parks fund in order to fund those parks projects. It has to be based on what are our best leverage opportunities? What is the grant that just, the grant opportunity that just came out? How does it connect to the, to, if we said we were going to make a regional trail system, how is it doing that? Or how's it approaching equity? If we, if we have funding sources from development impact fees for trails in one part of the city, but we need to be able to achieve geographic. Those are a set of policy frames around that, the trails fund that should come first. All right, so rather than saying, for two years, where you are now designating all of the funding that's going to be spent, and all we're looking at is, okay, I don't, I mean, that, that, those all look like good projects, but I don't know what's not on the list, and I, and I don't, and, and once we do, once we vote for this, if, you know, six months from now, some new thing comes out, we won't have any money, because we will have committed it all to these projects. So I feel like, for, even capital accelerator funds need some, they need some of those kinds of policy considerations, you know, it's got to leverage at least this much money, and it's got to contribute to equity or whatever. Some, some way for you to look at things to bring to us, as opposed to us just seeing and having to say yes or no, you know, each meeting that you bring us those elements. Then there are a set of these funds that are purely programmatic. The Kids Home Run is an example of that. It might be that the age-friendly piece is that, because we already have an age-friendly strategy that's been built out. So we're not really looking for, you know, you know, wild new ideas and age-friendly. We, we do want to leverage other, other funding sources, so there's a leverage component to it, but it's mainly programmatic. Kids Home Run, same thing, we, we are definitely, you know, council member Sandin and I and the staff team and future ready met, we've met a couple times now to try to figure out how to go out and raise a, you know, millions of dollars to, to make the program even better. But the Measure E funding is for the program itself. And we already know what that program is and what we've committed to do. So it's fairly defined. So that's, that's programmatic. And that might be true of the homeless enforcement pieces as well, I don't, I don't, I don't know. And as I say, it might be the age-friendly piece. So that's, that's a different kind of set of budget, of policies and frameworks and principles that you might apply than you would apply to the trails fund in terms of leverage and opportunity. Then there's this set that are, that I, I think might be best described as, as venture funds. And these are the areas that I know are the most confusing, but they're, but on purpose. And the, the smart city stuff's a great example of those, but also some of the homeless, the homelessness areas where we have said, we want to be able to, we want to be able to be nimble and experiment and entrepreneurial in real time. And we don't know, we, we cannot know, you know, a year and a half out what those things are. We don't have perfect knowledge, we're not omniscient in terms of what, what opportunities are out there. And we want the ability to go out and, you know, do experiments and to partner when a, when a startup, you know, gets launched here in our community and then, hey, we've got a new thing we want to try on, on transit mobility or whatever. Or, you know, Mr. Lidesma finds an autonomous transit shuttle and that lines up with what we wanted to do, but we wouldn't have known that six months ago, six weeks ago even. And so if we had budgeted two years in advance, all of the expenditures, we would have no ability to actually do that as a venture. So in those categories, it feels like we need a set of, of, of policy principles that are distinct from the capital ones, and they're distinct from the programmatic ones, but how we would do, how we would manage it. And that's, that's going to be the hardest, that would be the And that's, that's going to be the hardest, that would be the hardest one, because not very many cities have figured out yet how to operate in the 21st century, you know, iterative lane startup, venture, entrepreneurial mode. We have, we've like done it on an as-needed basis, but we've never done it either as a budget frame. But so it feels, and there may be others, but at least for me, I've been thinking about, those are three distinct kinds of categories that these, that these fund objectives fit in. And we need to build out what those principles and policies are before we start identifying all the specific expenditures and how they fit. And as I say, I'm not even sure that on the venture ones, we should ever be articulating the full amount of those specific expenditures. So I, it, once you do that, then it also helps to think about, okay, there's an implied policy in here, which I support, which is that at least for some kinds of these funds, there ought to be a 5%, you know, administrative cost. And I'm supportive of that. I also, it should be, that should be a policy though. It shouldn't be that next year you come in, it's 8% and we didn't decide anything. But it should be, I'm supportive of five, I'm not supportive of anything more than that, but that should be a written-down budget policy that we are applying. We need, we need to have those sorts of things that apply in these cases. So, I mean, I started to scratch some things, you know, things down that would be the kinds of policies that are, I think, appropriately given those elements, and I just did it like an hour and a half ago, so forgive me if it's, I'm just being rough about it, but that also deal with the issues around fidelity to the, what the voter said we were going to do, this whole issue about, are we funding the existing government, existing governmental activities or the incremental improvements that we promised in the measure E language and in the ballot argument that three of us signed and in the campaign that Mr. Ledesma led. But, you know, policies like these are to supplement and not supplant existing expenditures, or at least existing expenditures as of November of 2016, that the expenditures are to support the specific objectives of a measure E, they're not, they're not for categories. There's not money here for homelessness, there's money for the specific purpose of reducing homelessness and reducing community impacts. We don't have a homelessness fund that's for all things homeless. That we ought to be adopting performance measures for several of these. Some of them are obvious, road rehab, we already, would be easy for us to do. You know, our commitment here is to, is to improve, you know, all the roads and we could, we could create a metric of that based on the pavement condition index and show that progress. But we said we were going to reduce homelessness, so I feel like we should be adopting some of those metrics and that should be the basis of our report to the community. Whereas in measure J and measure K, our commitment was, we are going to spend, we are going to spend money on libraries and parks throughout the city. We weren't committing to a set of outcomes, we're committing to those, that expenditure. So our report to the community is, see, we spent the money on library and childcare and streetcar or whatever. This one's different. We said we are going, we are going to achieve reductions in homelessness and in community impacts and some of these other elements. So our report to the community needs to focus on those performance measures and our dashboard should do the same. Hopefully that will cause us to ask the question every time you bring us an expenditure, how exactly is this spending going to reduce homelessness or improve mobility or increase internet access, broadband and internet access? So that's a, that's, you know, that's the kind of policy. For the, for the venture funds, you know, having some parameters around how we assess opportunities in real time, I don't know what that looks like frankly, but we would, we need that, because we're all getting, we all get ideas, whether it's the downtown streets team or the engagement app that we saw in Korea or whatever, I mean, we're constantly being fed things and that's great, we're getting great opportunities for partnerships and for leverage and what have you, and so is our entire staff. But we don't have a, we don't have a rubric, a process or a set of parameters by which to assess those and say, here's, okay, that's, that one's a good opportunity, that one sounds good, it's not, it's not as good as the other ones. And we need to have that at your level, in the department level and here at the council as well to be able to assess, to be able to do our job. So I don't pretend to be a comprehensive list, but those are the kinds of sort of policy-level frames I think need to be put onto this whole, the whole rubric in order to assure that we are keeping faith with what we told the voters and what is an incredibly complicated, or incredibly rich set of objectives that we, that we committed to in November. So just to get us started.
Mr. Ledesma?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Phil, for kind of running through this. And when, yeah, I'm kind of going back to the measure E intent, right? And it just, we did make this set of commitments and the mayor is right in how we did the allocation. And when I went through it, there's a lot of things in here that you sort of like, right? You kind of, I get it, you're right, there's project by project. But in thinking about the approach, and that's what the, where I'm kind of stuck at, or at least the mayor and Mr. Johansson have brought up, is just, I thought the approach of how we approached these, how we come to these programs, kind of looked at them, five distinct programs we're now building and what are their objectives and strategies, and then what are we funding out of them? And I'm just going to pick on John, because he was up there already, sorry, John. But I had this notion, we talked about this at some, whatever point it was, at the beginning of the year, that the smart cities would almost become the innovation desk where departments would come and the, there'd be certain strategies they'd try to implement, but also where people would go as sort of our own internal grant, like there's things like the mobility action plan or whatever. But there would be a set strategy that each one of these areas would come and tell us, here's our objectives based on what we knew the measure E intent was, here's what we're planning, how to program that, here's our list of strategies and here's some initial funding, like projects that fit into that. And that'll allow us to set of, kind of make sure we're on the same page from a policy standpoint, because there's policy choices in there. And then we can, then the list of projects would make sense. And I think we're all sort of in that, at least I'm hearing the mayor say, a little bit of that, that the projects out of context of that, they're still not adding up to me. Not that they're not good projects, I want to see the Linden-Claugsburg Trail sidewalk repaired too. I would love to see it, but if that is taken away from our opportunity to further something else, that's a choice that I want to be able to make. I want to be able to set that priority in advance and like, these are things that are important, these are, I know are things that we could be doing through our CIP process and we're not going to get to. We haven't got to that in the seven years I've been on council, so one more year, maybe it makes the list of CIP projects next year. But that's the choice that as a councilor I thought I might make, because just because we have the money in E doesn't mean we have to spend it all. I think that was the message about allocation, that we did want to reserve some for being able to leverage for a grant or an opportunity that came up, whatever it was. So I would like to maybe have staff think about that approach, rather, I'm not objecting to any or all, you know, any one project in here from a programmatic standpoint, but in my mind's eye, I was anticipating department heads coming up here talking about what they've heard from us, and I'm just going to, so send you back there, trail system, here's our strategy and kind of your objectives, we could agree upon, I think you're right, we had performance metrics, and here are some initial projects, some initial investments to kind of get us off the ground. I thought of it as almost many businesses were setting up internally that we're funding, we're providing seed money to go out and make these things happen. And then the one that doesn't fit that mold is the road rehab. We kind of knew what the program was with that. But in my mind's eye, that's where I thought this process might go. And again, I don't oppose any one or specific, there are a couple of things in here where I'm like, oh, okay, how did that fit in here? But that's kind of the exercise we go through on some of the other measures we pass that were, that are allocated for specific funding sources, either streetcar or flood protection or whatever else, but here, that's, it wasn't that. So again, I'm not, so I think from a approach, how we approach this going forward, that's, I would like to see that too, whether it's the way I envision or the council will weigh in as well. On the budgeting side, there does need to be some just basic ground rules, right, on that, on kind of what it is. And I think the one that's just kind of glaring, because we brought it up, is the 5% of program be administered for administrative support that you get. And that, I understand that, I understand the need that it takes people and time to implement things that we have to do. I would be comfortable at 5% now and let that run, and it's staff's point to try to meet that. And we may be wrong in that in two or three years, we may, you know, I'm not going to be opposed, I wouldn't like to see it go higher, but if that's just the reality of our budget, then you'll bring that to us too. But right now, I'd like to see it at 5, that 5% is a good policy point. But again, there's a budgeting and you're kind of laying some groundwork for it here, but I'd rather, and we need to address how much is dedicated to administrative costs, how much we might target for leverageable funds, that is, we can leverage other grants or whatever else. We should be having some sort of targets within that, that every program after that sort of has to manage to. Anyway, so that's some basic ideas. Again, I'm not, it'd sound like we're poo-pooing all this great stuff, but it is important because we did make a commitment with the voters about these monies would be used to each one of the objectives pointed out on the ballot language and in subsequent, everything we put out in the campaign and we talked to voters about, it was always a forward-looking programs. We have our, almost our base programs, we went through that budget cycle, and I think the staff did a tremendous job in getting us, we have our set of services. But these are other sort of ventures that we are funding and we want to see staff, at least I do, want to see staff come back and a more, like I said, programmatic for each one of those. What's the intent? And we have to help set those policies, what do we want to see out of them? And then, and then take it from there. I think that might be a better approach.
Just, Councilman Ledesma, one of the, the only allocations we're actually asking the council to approve tonight are those in black, which is going to be not even half a million dollars probably, I mean, very, very small amount. All of those in orange really were examples of the types of projects that each person who's taking the lead are looking at with a clear direction from council that if there's no leveraging, we've got a big lift to convince the council it's a project we should do, that we're looking to, where could we leverage? But certainly here, the comments about the overall programmatic analysis that you need.
Do you have this document in a hard copy? Because our agenda book doesn't have the colors, right?
Yeah, I would say all of our.
You don't know what we're being asked to actually appropriate?
Yeah, it is all in black.
I realize we did the PowerPoint in color and the agenda book is not in color.
Yeah.
So I could go through really quickly, just to, again, very quickly to show you what we're looking for the actual allocations with, let me just do that really quickly. So it's, it's just the program administrative costs for the road rehab of 48,000. It is the program costs for the bike ped master plan at 58,000. It is the allocation of the half of the deputy city manager and the data specialist in the smart city. We are asking for the innovation team and the startups and residents be allocated because we've committed to those, we thought those were things the council had directed us to move forward on. It's the extra help, it's a number of things in the enforcement cleanup, because that, as I indicated earlier, is really the just doubling up on what we're currently doing, it's just doing it twice as much. We didn't see necessarily a policy, although the mayor has just talked about the impact analysis we have to come up with, how we show the, what the, what doing it twice a week, what does that do to the impact on the community? So we have to come up with some metrics for that. And then there's, there's nothing on the kids home run that we're asking for approval for tonight. So fairly middle, sorry, then the homeless coordinator payment, once the grant runs out, and then the program costs for the other public safety. So really, it's mostly, tonight, we're mostly asking for the costs associated with people doing the programs and some positions, because those people and those positions need to start working. Most of the other specifics that are in here, are there as, these are areas that the people responsible, the lead people are looking at as areas to get some guidance from council as to whether we're going in the right direction, whether any of these projects are things you, we absolutely should not be working on. Clearly, we've gotten some direction that we need to look at this at a higher level and bring that back to council. And perhaps, as Councilman Ledesma indicated, perhaps we bring each of the lead people to talk at a council meeting in the future about the smart city, the road, the roads, the bike ped master plan and have a higher level discussion.
Phil, if I could just add on, then on kids home run, you're looking for a half-time data specialist as well to be approved as part of kids home run, so.
Correct, it's a full-time position, it's half.
So we would do the program administration, the contributions to staff, and then come back with a plan in each, basically a plan in each area. I think, again, Phil mentioned it, but we illustrated these as examples of what department heads are contemplating, but the orange was to come back with the agreements, scope of work, whatever, before we would spend any money on those specific areas.
So, I'm sorry. If I can go next.
Oh, sorry. Well, just on the, on the data, data position, you know, I think one of the issues there is timing of bringing this person on, because until you've got really a plan, it's hard to define what the scope of that, the job is going to be. So this is an allocation, but it may be a while before a person, and what that person's going to be doing.
Correct. I would, I would look to John Robinson, who's taken the lead here, to sort of, you know, ask as to whether that would be something helpful right now or whether it's something that we do after we get the plan.
Okay. Mr. Ledesma?
Sure. Well, I think what I'm, because there are a set of, the orange, so I'm going to go, I want to ask that we go through each, you kind of ran through it, and so we know which ones that we are, that you need to worry about, or if there's some.
So we have the.
Let me also state, Phil, that I'm not suggesting by any means that, I think to Councilmember Johansson's point, before I say yes or think about approval, I like, I still would like to see it come back in a more programmatic fashion and also address some key budget policy issues. I just want to know, because I'm trying to keep score here, which ones of your list are asking for funding? So I'm looking at, are we going to find road rehab and circle?
I will go through each of them, again, a little slower. So we're asking for a program administrative costs for the road rehab program at 48,000. That's 5%.
If there's no objection, why don't we just, why don't we, for our own discussion, why don't we just go through these? We can still have the macro discussion later, but why don't we go through these page by page?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, so just let's stay on road rehab for a second.
So here we go, so we've got the state street road rehab been designed at 929, which we're not asking for allocation tonight, it's just, that's, that's the current plan but we're asking for the program administrative costs to run the program, whatever.
Right.
And that's 5%,
You're asking for approval of the 5% today?
Correct.
That's why I'm just circling these, so I know which ones were, as you go through each.
So on the content of this one, the, I think, our measure E approach on road rehab has to be fully integrated with RSV1 approach. And this is a great, this is a great example. So the voters of the whole city voted for measure E and our commitment was we'd be serving the whole city. So I'd be interested in seeing an approach that would allow us to not, not score, like only one neighborhood's going to have any funding out of measure E for two full years, and then we're using SBA1 funds in other neighborhoods, if we can blend them together so that we can, you know, we can report back to the citizens that what's, what the actual, what our actual progress is on a broader basis, doesn't mean we're going, we're not repairing roads in every single part of the city at all times. We do have a plan, but I would hate to convey the impression that we've chosen just this one, I mean, significant part of the city, but this one neighborhood to receive all the funding, when we know that we are going to have other funding to do other road rehabilitation work through the provisions of SBA1.
Sure, I know that our public works director has indicated that the first thing that's going to happen is with some road money that's currently in the road fund, they're updating the pavement management plan, and if that pavement management plan indicates that there are other areas of the city that need to be looked at first, or if SBA1 money cannot, is, can benefit and could be maximized in some other projects, he will come back. The reason that Mr. Ambi indicated that this was what he was looking at is because in 2004, when the council approved the measure K money, this was, this was part of the project and we never got to it because we ran out of money. It's the one area that actually didn't get worked on with measure K and it's not eligible for any state and federal grants. It is eligible for some 1A, so we will certainly be working to try to leverage that money. And again, it would, this is an example, it may not be the one that comes to you and whatever project ultimately the staff recommends using the great, the measure E road money for, will come to the council with its reasons why and, and the council will either say they agree or will give us direction to do something different.
Right, my hope is that we will do it the reverse, that we will say, here's the policies. the policies. That Measure E, you know, is to support equity across the city. So those part, those neighborhoods that are ineligible for funding from, from S B1, or that, you know, that, that those will be our priority, and that we will lay out those things. So it's not, we're not get, we're not having to wait for an item to come to us on consent as item 13, and somebody has to pull it, and then try to intuit what the, what the implicit policy was, and second guess it each time. But that we have agreed on, here's the approach that's happening here. And then you bring it to us and you're just, then you know, you, you have certainty. We don't have to be bird dogging every single expenditure to try to figure out what your, what your, what your theory of action was. And we can know that the, that it's, we're, you know, we're advancing the basic policies of the, that the community and the council want to see happen. So.
We will come back on-
And this, this one seems like an easy one for that.
All right.
I agree.
The vice goal, and on this, I think I would highlight the, the top one, the BT match grant. That's essentially, that's just money that we're hold, that, that the, the director, Ms. Tuttle, said, I don't have, I don't know what we're going to spend this on. We're just going to leave it here as grant match money. These are the projects that she was looking at. Again, none of the, we're not asking for any allocation from any of those projects tonight. Going to the, again, we're, the only allocation here is simply the program administrative cost at 5% is the only thing that, that, that we're asking for tonight. Questions on that area? Okay. On the smart city, again, we're asking for the, half of the deputy city manager who takes the lead on this and half of a data specialist, and then the money for the startups in residency, and the, and the money for the innovation team. And the various, the preparing the plan and the other, the other projects, we're not asking for funding on those right now.
And what does the, what does the innovation and tech team cost? I mean, what is the $40,000 for?
John?
In the, in the past, we've used that for training. We send, we've sent staff to different training. We also use that as kind of a, it hasn't been utilized yet in this way, but in theory, it could be used as kind of a mini opportunity fund if staff come up with innovations that would require some startup money on a very small scale. You know, $20,000 per year is available for the training and for those kind of costs and to support incentives for innovation. We're looking at internal contests around ideation for innovation ideas that save money. So those would be used for incentives for those kinds of things as well.
And John did say something right there. I should have said, these numbers are all two-year budget numbers. So when it's 40,000, it's actually 20,000 a year. And that's probably not, I didn't make that very clear. Okay, so that's the smart city for the reducing-
I'm sorry, what's on, is there anything in this? Oh, I see the ride sharing pilot for seniors, and the, and the other mobility is, is there something on here on mobility? Let's, let's see, okay. I mean, just to highlight, that was one of the areas that we had-
We talked about.
That was a specific subcategory of the smart city, along with age friendly and engagement and broadband. Not that we need to do every single one every year. I mean, that is, so it's fine that it's not on the list, but I mean, we do need to remember that. And we can't afford to do every single one every, every year, but that's true across this whole portfolio.
Okay, and then, did I go in the wrong direction here? Hold on. Yep, smart city. Too fast. Nope, not that way, sorry.
We apparently need to use Measure E on a new PowerPoint.
Yeah, we do. Or get a, get a finger that's a little less jumpy. Okay, that's one. There we go. So on, on this one, we're simply asking for, well, this one, we're asking for significant allocation. It's the extra help. It's the, the expenditures, the, that we use, the equipment for cleanups and the program cost. This is essentially a program that's in place. And the idea from, from this is that we would double our, double our efforts at enforcement, double our efforts at cleanup. Obviously, again, as the mayor indicated, we have to come up with some metrics to show how doubling those efforts has a positive impact on the, on the community and the-
So, and is it just the doubling that's being paid for here? Or is, are you then charging the entire, those entire efforts to Measure E?
No, no. This is just, this is, this is just, this is the doubling. The, the general fund still is, the amount of money we were spending previously is in the budget out of the general fund to pay for the, the police officers. And the, this is the doubling of the effort. So we took, we took the overtime we were spending and we doubled the overtime. And this is the second half of the overtime.
And are they all, are all these costs camp costs?
Good best answer. There we are.
Hard to tell exactly, but it, I mean, it looked like, given the involvement of the conservation corps and where you said the extra help was working on camps and all of that. But is it, is it all on camps?
It is not all on camps. Some of it is to maintain existing sites so that they don't get re, you know, re-infested by making sure that we continue limbing up trees, vegetation management on an ongoing basis so that we don't create environments that are attractive for them to re-encamp. So it's ongoing. Once we've cleaned a site, to make sure that annually we have enough funding to go in and graze goats, lift trees, so people aren't in there camping and hiding.
So the, because we're, you're proposing to appropriate a large, like, a large proportion of the total, I think this one does deserve some discussion because sort of alternate, alternate approaches here could be the impacts, reducing the impacts of homelessness that aren't camp-related, which there are in terms of, well, I can't say that they're completely unrelated to camps, but you know, the incidence of homeless, homelessness where, you know, the, the reports we've had of, you know, of women who wake up and there, there are people sleeping in their backyard or on their porch, or, you know, violent individuals or what have you, that aren't, there are just straight up enforcement of, of, you know, violations of trespassing or other, of other laws. I'm wondering if there was consideration given to non-camp related enforcement on homelessness. And then second, as we were developing the Measure E approach on, on enforcement and cleanup, one of the elements that we described, and this relates a little bit to the Costa Mesa thing that I know several of you saw that I forwarded as well, which was, you know, the, where the courts have, have put the brakes on some cleanup and enforcement efforts, they have done so because cities have not demonstrated that they are providing appropriate alternatives and safeguards. So how can you, you know, is, our ability to deal with camps, either, whether it's on the river or in front of Capitol Bowl, is to some extent constrained if we don't provide, if there's no altern, if there's no alternative location or lockers or somewhere for folk, for, for people's, for people's belongings. And so, you know, one of the, one, at least when I supported this, this allocation, it was for the, it was partly for the purpose of making sure that we were making those strategic investments that would, would maximize the defensibility of our enforcement efforts. And so, so in those two cases, I'm like, what about, what about sort of direct law enforcement? And then second, has, is this framework been informed by trying, by dealing with what the courts have articulated, or sort of the, the core things that cities need to do in order to have defensible anti-camping and anti-vagrancy and, and pain handling ordinances?
Well, I believe that's the area we've got on services with the homeless coordinator and this whole, the whole service first effort. It's not on the slide, but the additional category that you have after kids home run.
But those are, so, but, but those are typically done by the services community, saying, it would be great, you know, the, a good, good people would say, for, for homeless individuals, let's make sure that they have a locker. That's not a bad, that's not a bad thing, but that's a different thing than saying, okay, let's, let's ask our attorney to go through the case law and say, what are the, what are your, you know, identify for us, what are the key elements that the courts have held, a city should have in order to, to be able to enforce some of the ordinances that we are enforcing around camping and, and some of these other issues. And we've seen, and that's, that's a known issue. And that's what, that's what the, you know, the other documents were. So you're systematically identifying what those elements are as opposed to a service approach, which is, which is also valuable. And, I mean, they're obviously related, but you don't want to end up having done six of the, of the eight things and then still have a legally vulnerable ordinance or enforcement action when you could have dealt with it with the funding that was, was identified for that purpose in this section.
Okay. Well, we do have the services to be determined section. Again, it's not on the slide, but it does follow. I don't know if that could be, it is also, all these are led by our police department.
I mean, certainly on the maintenance structures, grounds, utilities, vehicle expenditures, we, if we're getting direction from the council to work with the city attorney and also look if there's other structural things that we have to do in order to make sure that our ordinances are being applied constitutionally, we can, we can look at those.
Chief, given you an ad?
Actually, no, I agree with, with the city managers as far as our efforts thus far. What Phil just stated is true. We can certainly pursue and evaluating whatever remedies that we may have not have anticipated. But we've, it's been a pretty robust effort thus far. Much of this has been spent, you know, our time has been focusing on the encampments themselves and the re-encamping of the, of areas that we've already conducted, you know, notice and cleanups. And this is one of the biggest issues that we are finding and that we're facing. If we don't clean up the camps, then they just simply repopulate. So it's a pervasive issue.
So is it our officers that are cleaning up the camps?
No, no. Our officers make contact. The process is basically, we, we reach for them. We, we go out looking for these camps from wherever source, whether you call or anyone else, or we, we go out and we, if, really search them out. We make contact with the camps. We provide services. We, you know, go out of our way to make sure that any services that are available are made available to them. And then we notice them. And then over, after a reasonable amount of time, and a rather extended reasonable amount of time, then what we do is we, we work with parks and they come in and they do a cleanup. So the camp is cleared, we clean up, we limb up. At that point, we had remarkable examples of successes, the North Levy being one of them, the, the Barge Canal being another one. There's a number of different examples. When we haven't done those cleanups and limbing up, then we have re, you know, they just return. And they do so very quickly.
I may just add, Mayor, to your comment. And the city attorney's office has been very involved, Mr. Mitchell, obviously, in helping give guidance to the police department as to what they need to do legally when we're both noticing and then what we do when we find material.
But this, this is an obligation of the city. Just to recall from last year's strategic plan conversation, when we took up the encamp issue in the first place, this was front and center. And it may, it may not be as clear now because there's not as many protests happening in, across the river and other, and other places of these actions. But we, none of us were prepared to wait for that to happen. So that, it, it is, you know, I've said this repeatedly in public and everywhere else, we have to be both in the enforcement mindset and the service mindset at the same time. And they complement each other. The extent to which we provide better services, the less enforcement we should have to do. But they are not the same.
Correct.
And only taking, how do we, how do we serve homeless individuals as our only way of dealing with this issue and not paying attention to the enforcement side in a rigorous legal, legal way to say, what is, if we were, if we were challenged, if somebody were, if, you know, Western Center or Legal Services or someone else were to file, you know, file a case as they have in other jurisdictions, what do we know from those cases? Are the, are the practices that are the most likely to, for, to immunize us against, you know, against being defeated in court? That's, it's not a best practice for, from a police department perspective. If it's not a best practice from a service perspective, is it a best practice from what is, what is a court going to expect as a, as a minimum standard or as a high standard? And we, we need to do that. And now, I can't, I don't can't keep voting to clear camps if we're, if I'm not convinced we're not going to be legally defensible if we're challenged. We just haven't been yet. And we haven't been because we do a good job in the department, and our officers and our partners are out there. And, and they are respecting the folks that we're dealing with and, and bringing services to the table. But that's no guarantee. And we need to, we have, this, this pot of funding in particular was in partly put in place in order to create the legal foundation, a legal foundation for our enforcement efforts to succeed.
So I-
And it might be equipment, but it might not, I mean, the lockers is just one example because that, that's one that has appeared in the case, in the case law. But it's not the only thing. And the other things may not be equipment. I mean, some of them are going to be shelters and other sorts of things. And some of them may be things that we cannot do or we can't afford to do even with these funds, but we should know what they are.
I, I think that the, the thinking here was that those expenses that we're going to spend on our attorney to make sure that we are getting the good advices was not an appropriate use of Measure E. We might have been wrong. We'll use, we, we pay our city attorney through our normal process. And we certainly hear loud and clear that we need to make sure that everything we're doing in this area is being done in accordance with those cases. Otherwise, we're, we're wasting money, you know, doing cleanups that we're going to get challenged on. But we can certainly put some money-
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking for, for spending Measure E money on the attorney. I, I am saying, if, if court after court has said, you cannot clear a camp and remove belongings if you don't have lockers, then we need to use this, this funding to have lockers. And I'm just saying that, that's what, that's specifically what the case law is. But that's, that, we, that's what we, that's why I, I propose parts of this and why I voted for it, to, to get ahead of that. So it's not, we're not dealing with a problem. We're not having our attorney later on say, hey, we, you know, we're 50/50 on this case because we haven't done these things. We, we ought to be looking at that, but it's, it's investing in those elements. And I don't know, I don't know what they are, so I don't know how much it costs. I don't know if it's, if it's, you know, if it's going to be the only $100,000 less or whatever, the amount of money that you're leaving in this case. So that's what, that's why I'm kind of pressing hard on this, is that there's not, there's no money left in this budget if we were to, if we were to approve all of these elements tonight. And I don't want, I don't want to lose this. All right, other comments, sorry. Remember them, Johannesen?
Yeah, I mean, this, this homeless, actually, these numbers are, are interesting. The, so basically, under this item, it's 978,000, 980,000. That's basically doubling the efforts.
Correct.
So right now, we're spending every two years, $980,000, plus you're asking for another 492. So if I double that, it looks like in total, over two years, we're spending $2.5 million on, on between the cleanup and enforcement and then the reducing homelessness. And if we have a couple other homeless people, that's $10,000 each.
I'm doing a quick math. It's, this is, so let's just round that up to a million. So it's a half a million a year. We were spending 250 a year, right? We were spending 250 a year. And, and now we're going to double that up to 500 a year.
Well, so this 978 is, is not-
Oh, no, I'm sorry. So we would be sending 750, I'm sorry.
Right, right. So it gets close to 2 million.
It's a significant amount of money.
And with, you know, a couple hundred homeless people, I think is our count, that's $10,000 each, right? That could go to rent subsidy or actually something that would actually, you know, get housing, which is, I, I, you know, we've, we've got to do a lot of this cleanup. I understand that. But I think it kind of gets down to the policy issue that, you know, it's really just, I'm attacking the symptoms. And not, not the cause. And, and there could be some thought at some point to actually get people into housing with this money, but.
And I agree with Mayor Pro Tim Johannesen. That was my thought initially when I was asking about, earlier when I was asking about the cleanup. I'm seeing here, you know, 140,000 a year for extra help and overtime costs, when in fact, we could be making a potential investment in an innovative approach for people who may be trying to find their way out of homelessness and be doing that work while at the same time getting skills that they would need to be self-sufficient. And you would be necessarily reducing homelessness on one end of that while at the same time simultaneously reducing the impacts because it would be the people who are getting those job readiness skills that would be cleaning up the community and hopefully finding a path out of homelessness. So I just, I'm wondering if there are innovative ways to even approach just even that one line item of, of, you know, the community cleanup. It doesn't have to be necessarily doubling up on the staff, but maybe finding new innovative ways to help the community and the folks that are being affected or the people that are, even are homeless, to, to assist in that effort.
So that's what I believe. We have the $310,000 for homeless services activity. It's not, we haven't allocated how it's going to be spent because we're looking at what are the best ways to provide services in a way that, so, so in some ways, we, we split these two together. They probably could be looked at, you know, it might have been smarter if we put them next to each other. So we sort of look at them in conjunction because you really, you can't, the enforcement and the cleanup and the services, our model is that we do all of those together. So we really probably should have put those in, in a more logical order here.
And I did see that in the homeless services activities. However, half of 310,000 probably wouldn't pay for the startup of the particular program I was referencing, unless, of course, we had another match from perhaps another agency. But if, if there were some fraction of the extra help overtime in, in conjunction, there, there might be a chance that West Sacramento by itself could start that program.
Ms. Endy?
No, okay. So I will just move to the kids home run. Again, that's coming back in September. And then we have, we're at the, oh, yeah, the data, oh, I'm sorry. So in, yes, in the, in the, in the kids home run, there's also the, the, thank you, that's correct. We didn't catch that. This is also includes the, the data specialist position, the half, the other half of the data specialist. So half of it is for the kids home run and half of it- data specialist, so half of it is for the Kids Home Run and half of it is for the Smart City, is how we were proposing that that position be paid for.
And this, and-
But that was approved in the budget, I think, as part of the reason, this is obviously an, I think in the budget discussions, we talked about it coming out of Measure E, but-
Yeah, for the personnel cost, it includes half of the data, the other half of the data specialist and the halftime program manager for Kids Home Run.
Correct.
His salary was only allocated for the first three months of, after getting appointed, so this will fund him for the next two years.
But that's the personnel cost there.
This data specialist is different than the one that's, was requested in the Smart Cities?
It's, it would be the same position, but he, he would serve two roles, data for Smart Cities and data related to Kids Home Run.
It's one FTE, we're just out splitting the cost into, recommending that the cost be split in two ways.
I think in this program area, the Kids Home Run program area, the, in some extent, it's self-regulating because we've created, we've committed essentially to a set of quasi entitlements that we, you know, we will provide, you know, college tuition for each of the high school students, we'll provide the guaranteed internships, we're, we've committed a certain amount of funding to preschool. So it's over the, it, it's in the, in the, in the beginning years, those commitments aren't, aren't claimed, right? It's because the, the, not as many students are graduating as we hope will later and going on to college, they won't admit the requirements and so on and so forth. So in the beginning, there's funding available for the building of the data system, the building of the marketing, the building of the program, but that, that will necessarily diminish over time. And because it will, the same funds will be consumed by, in direct support for, for young people and, and their career and college preparation. So the, so in some sense, it's, it's the easiest one in terms of it being self-regulating in terms of administrative costs and other things, but it will require, you know, managing that and, and making sure that as hires are being made and as other commitments are being made, that you're looking at the out year in particular. Because I don't, like, for example, I don't think that the internships piece was, was this much in the, in the, compared to the college promise, but that's in the, in the original thing that we, that we did in October, I don't think it was, I don't think, I'm not sure, but I mean, but the point is, they all have, they all have an out year forecast that you, you know, so we can't start, even though there'll be money that's available in the earlier years, that has to be done really strategically in terms of one-time costs or short-term costs rather than permanent expectations that we're going to be funding things. And that gets to things that will be very important for our partners to hear, just, you know, we've said this before, but there's, there's no way we can be supporting us paying a financial aid counselor at Sac City College ten years from now or five years from now or maybe next year, because that, those, those exact funds will be necessary to pay for the tuition guarantee once we're talking about hundreds of kids. And so we, we need to be very careful about long-term commitment, permanent commitments that we're making in that fund, so.
And I believe that Mr. Winbuck is bringing back in September, that is, that essentially, that program as you've just articulated with the startup costs in the early years and then the, the transfer of the money is. And again, the, as I think council's aware, the homeless coordinator position was, they paid more with a grant, that grant is running out, and so we're recommending that half of that position be paid for out of Measure E and half of it out of the general fund, which the general fund includes the half payment for that position starting in October, which is a, a new commitment of the general fund.
I don't like this, and I, and I have an alternative I want to suggest also, so.
I, I think, I think we're struggling with this, and I might be being Mrs. Obvious, but I think we've got some brand-new programs that are like the Kids Home Run and all the innovation work, and then we've got huge areas that are challenges to, to us, to the city. We've got pavement, the pavement challenges, we've got the homeless issue, we've got to try to figure out how to get all the money we need to build this master amazing trail system. So we, we, we have way more need than what we can get from Measure E. So I think, but, but where there's, where there's the newer programs, it's kind of easier to tackle because we, we can kind of build it and we have some, we have some constraints around it because we know, okay, we have this, and then these other things are so huge that we can't fix the problem in two years or the issue. And so I think that's what's, that's what's hard, because I can see the project in State Street, it's like, oh my gosh, if we can like get on that, that would be great. I was imagining all these kind of like done, brought to you by Measure E, you know, with the trails, like every time you're riding the trails, it's like, oh gosh, we, we're doing all these things. But the issue, it's just, it's just so big. So I think having the framework that we're kind of trying to get to, at the same time, I can't, I'm trying to put myself in, in the seats of the staff members who are, who are looking at us, like, we need to get this going, we need to, you've told us that we need these trails, we need to get the trails, now we have money for the trails, I want to build the trails. And so I think, you know, I think that there's, that's where there's tension. So I'm hoping that through the discussion that we're having, that we can actually get the policy frame we need. I, I, it's super exciting that the voters kind of want us, want us to tackle these issues, but I think it is going to be over many years to actually kind of get some of these things done. So it is, it is how we focus and what we focus on and how we describe it to the community that's so important.
Yeah, I completely agree, and I, I, I know, I know I've been, you know, with the city manager, and I've gone back and forth on a lot of these issues a gazillion times, and I know each of you have as well. And I've been struggling with this because there's so many key decisions being made in this. And, and all, you know, as we've gone through each of these, there, you know, the big, big policy ones, both on the financial side, the, like, the policymaking side and who's making the policy and what we committed to in Measure E and what's going to be effective and all of that. And in the absence of a, of a, of a built-out policy framework on both kind of the supplement and not supplant, you know, that, those kind of things that are about essentially the will, the fidelity to what the voter said, and then like what's the vision, you know, what was our actual strategy in each of these elements? In the absence of any of that, at least for me, I'm, I'm approaching this trying to say, "Well, I cannot, I cannot support doing things like spending a third of the money for homelessness services on staff," because that's a horrible precedent. And if there was a policy that was clear that we're, no, we're not doing that, except in the following two super rare exceptions of which this falls under, then I could, I could see a way to do it. But in the absence of that policy framework, I'm looking at, going, oh my God, next, you know, the next cycle, every department head's going to be proposing, tells, "Oh, you know, we really did, we, we really, really did want to have somebody make sure that the water was, was drinkable in the city, but, you know, we're just going to have, we're going to have to let that person go unless you allocate Measure E funds to it." And I don't want to be held hostage to things that are already declared high priorities because of the Measure E funding source. And so, so I'm, this one I'm, I'm struggling on because we don't have any of those, of those policies, and it's such a big play, and it means, that's why when you say we only have three hundred and ten thousand dollars over two years, it's because we're spending such a large proportion of the money that is for homeless services and homeless housing on staffing. I would be a lot more comfortable if what we did was not that, if we preserved the four ninety-two or what, or the five hundred really, because I, I still think we should be appropriating the original amounts, or we should be targeting the original amounts for what it is and potentially have the five percent here as well. And instead, use the, use the, the carryover funds, the one-time carryover funds to say for, you know, for the, for the, for the two-year budget, I think there's enough in, in those one, one-time carryover funds, for this two-year budget, we're using those funds to sustain this position. But we now need to start, we have this money for, for homeless services and, and that we want to leverage and grants and everything else, we need to start putting that cost like we should in all of our, of all of our leveraging, that cost into it and getting the, getting the funding, sustainable funding that's not Measure E for a position of that, of that size, but without having to make a, some dramatic declaration tomorrow that you've got to make it sustainable and find outside funding within a five minutes. So you, we'd have two years to, to figure that out and also figure out what, what part of our regular budget. So not putting the position in jeopardy, but also not creating this really big gigantic piece of homeless services and then have virtually nothing left for, for permanent supportive housing, for downtown street streets, for any of the other things that we would like to be able to explore as potential strategies on the services side.
I, I couldn't agree, I can't, Mr. Mayor, I couldn't agree more. It just, it just, it's the part that sticks out in looking at the itemized list of items and of, it's, it's not necessarily a new program, it's an existing position that was funded outside, and now we're trying to carry it on. So back to the, kind of the budgeting policies as we approach, that runs across E, right, and our normal budgeting, that they, we do need to have these principles and framework in place about how we might position this. And I, and I think the five percent administrative costs, because it costs, or takes team members to make stuff happen, we get that. But, and in certain cases, do we want to fund an FTE? I think that's part of the, that's part of the programmatic strategy you'll bring, we should be discussing about, is that necessary for Kids Home Run? It makes sense because we're starting that up and, and, and the data specialist in the context of what we're trying to do, that makes sense. I just, I, I think we just need to get to that framework, that policy about how we're going to approach these things, because that's, my biggest concern is creating, creating, in our minds' eye today, we'll approve it, like, yeah, but we're going to try to find another grant for it. And then we don't, and then in two years, we come back to it like, well, now we, we got to keep it going and because we have other priorities, we, we just need to put ourselves, have that discipline to be able to say, it's going to, we, we'll find a way to fund it, we need to make it a sustainable part of our normal budgeting process so that these, these funds can be leveraged. That's, this is the one part that's been difficult for me as well, is how do we justify FTE for an existing program? And a third of it going towards, you know, the thing that kind of stuck out to me is where's our match for Sutter, where's that coming out of, and that, that kind of-
So, so we thought we had heard council direction very clear during the budget process that, you know, existing FTEs being paid for for the general fund or warrant to be transferred to Measure E, and so we've, we eliminated those. This, the, we, this one we thought was different because it is a grant, one-time grant that was running out and, and there, it never was funded by the general fund. And so in order to continue the, the level of service that this particular person's given, we thought it was an appropriate use. If it's not, and we, and we, there is enough money in the carryover projected, we could certainly, we could do that for the two years.
So the, the one thirty would cover that one eighty cost because the funding goes until October?
I believe, I'd have to do the analysis of exactly how much-
Recall when we adopted our, our balanced budget, we didn't have a lot of elbow room-
We have five thousand dollars.
Don't worry, I'm thinking of that too.
Yeah. It's going to be close.
It's going to be close, yeah, I, I-
Yeah.
But that's for two, that's for two years, so it's for, there'd be ninety a year, we'll have seventy-five, sixty-five a year, and we have three, is it the end of October? Does anybody know, is it the end of October? So we've got a third of, yeah, I think it'll be, it'll be right there.
Well, I guess more importantly, though, it takes it off the table while we can figure out the policy.
Sure.
It may be that we come back and say, okay, we want, you know, for this point in particular, we're going to say that five percent could be fifteen or something, but we could, we could spend the time figuring it out as opposed to having a gun to our head, you know, the homeless coordinator's on the street tomorrow if you don't, if you don't approve this, this as a, as a precedent, so.
We absolutely could do that, absolutely.
Can I agree with that?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And I think I've gotten through all of the specifics.
Public safety?
Oh, public safety, so all we're, just again, the, all we're asking really for tonight is the ten thousand dollars in the administrative costs, which, to, to get the program going, but they will, both police and fire chief will get together, and I think we've heard clear from the council, we need to come to you with some higher-level policy discussions first before we come to you with specific programs. So we will, we will get the team together and try to set up some of those future council meetings where we can talk about the policies under each one of these. So have John Robbins talk about Smart City and have the two chiefs talk about the public safety ideas that they have and have Ms. Tuttle talk about the park, the, the trail plans. I think we, I think we understand what the council would like, sort of like the, like we did on the water sewer master plan where we really go through sort of the backbone before we get into the specific projects.
Mr. Mayor, President Johannesen?
So am I hearing right that, so essentially, we're just going to be approving the five percent on these categories and everything else is deferred?
And, and the positions, not, not including the homeless coordinator, all using, using, the homeless coordinator using the money from the carryover. So it's really the personnel cost is what we're proving. There's a couple other, remember, we, let me just make sure we don't-
The data position, the assistant city manager, deputy city manager.
There was the innovation team in the startup in residency.
Okay, yeah, 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 okay. Yeah, I think for the public safety one, because we never talked about it, I mean, you know, it was a last-minute change, and so we really do need the higher-level piece, where, you know, where you, where, okay, the, the city could focus on vehicle break-ins or something, you know, like what, what's the, I don't, I'm just making that up, but I mean, we could pick some high-level things as opposed to, we could spend ten thousand dollars on this or fifteen thousand on that, or we could buy that. We need to, we do need to have the, okay, what are we actually trying to accomplish here, which we don't have in the, we don't have that part of the framework, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then there's the, so, but then there's the budget policy piece.
Yes.
That I think we, we also talked about in conjunction with the Measure G discussion, well, some of us in the, in the, in the public financing authority board as well. I think that that approach makes sense.
Yeah.
You proposed it, do you want to say it again, here?
Well, I mean, for, for Measure E or, or-
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we just need to have a set of principles, framework around how we approach budget, and I started to take off a couple of them, the five percent obviously is the big one. But also just around how much do we want to set a percentage target for how much is leverage, leverageable towards other things? And we can come up with a couple of, I hadn't, thought of making a note of another one, just heard, oh, the budget issue around how FTE, any FTE proposed for E, how it might be considered, to your point, if, if there's part of a programmatic, if it's new, having a criteria before it's approved here, it might be the kind of the budgeting sort of policy we need to outline so that it's clear as Cindy and John and everybody else are considering their programs, like, well, I'm going to need somebody for this, and I have a darn good reason, it meets all that criteria, I need a quarter of a person or half a person to do that. I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not advocating that, I'm just simply saying we should articulate, if there is an opportunity, what would that be?
Yeah, I mean, if, as an example, if, if the parks director did come back and said, "I have a, a grant that will cover the, the whole regional trails system," you know, it's going, it's a grant, and, and they'll fund ninety percent of a position, but we would need to pay ten percent. Yeah, okay, I'm, I'm okay with like getting past the five percent, but you're right, we should have the, we should have at least the, some basic parameters that, that also gives, you know, our, our colleagues on the staff an opportunity to make moves without having to wonder, well, okay, what's the council going to say about it, to the maximum extent possible?
Right.
So, you know, in advance, I can be entrepreneurial and make, make decisions without, without having to worry about us second-guessing every single one of them from here, so.
Yeah.
So in, so if we've created the same, the same ad hoc with, without an ongoing responsibility comprised solely of less than a quorum of the council committee to, to look at those issues and help, help scope them and bring them back to council, is what the board did.
I would recommend that, yeah.
Okay.
And I do have one question about, I, I don't want to make this more complicated than it already is at this point, but with, with the five, I know that there's a lot of work involved in each of these areas, so I don't want us to necessarily not support the five percent, but I think it, it harkens back to your initial comments, Mr. Mayor, about that these were parameters, and so if we start to come up with a five percent of something that then becomes, it's like it's an ongoing thing, and if we want some flexibility, that may take it away. So I, I think it's, for me, it's like a provisional kind of starting point that, that sounds about right, but as we dig into it, we may need to have some flexibility to revisit that, especially if we do want to take a bigger bite of some, of the, one of the areas this year, for example, knowing we're going to come back to something else later. I just, I just would hate to be like handcuffed that we made a decision tonight about a five percent, again, recognizing that there's work in all these areas that has to be done and that there's a cost to that, but I just, I, I would feel more comfortable if, if we could have the, the possibility of like looking at it with, when we have more context and more, more direction and we're more kind of comfortable with the direction.
Yes, we've, we've actually discussed that we're going to create a, a, a accounting mechanism where we can keep track, because it's going to be people in different departments that maybe are doing work that relates to running these programs, we have to keep track of it. And we're looking at for both to make sure that we are actually, that five percent is the right number, and if we think that that's not the right number based upon the, what people are doing, we'll come to the council, and, and so we're going to certainly be able to justify that money of the one.
Right, yeah. That's a, that's a, it's a great point, because I, I think, coming back to the very beginning of the conversation about the targets being, being, you know, subject to what the opportunities are, and, because these are, these are big money, but they're also small really in the, in the real world, given what we're talking about. And I, you know, I imagine if, 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 if we won a Google fiber competition in, in two months from now, and Google said, "We, we will wire your entire city with, you know, wire your entire city with, you know, the fastest speed internet, and you will just need to you'll just need to put a, you know, a million and a half in, that that might be a year that we say, you know what, that's that is our best leverage opportunity in 2017, 18. And so we're going to all the venture funds, you know, so we're going to spend virtually nothing on ventures in the homeless aside and on the and the other smart other smart city stuff and, you know, one or two of the other categories. And we're going all in on this one. Or Sutter says, hey, well, you know, hey, we found some other partners and we've got $25 million to put in your into one homeless thing in West SAC. But you're going to have to come up with a million and a half dollar match. And that's way more than the 492 that we have in that in that section. We need to be able to consider drawing that down. And so even the notion of a two-year budget around some of these elements is problematic. And I'm not saying we you just leave everything open all the time. But it has to it has to have enough midterm flexibility to be able to pivot without without doing nothing because you're just waiting for lightning to strike, right? Those are the trade offs. But that's what the so that the complex budget parameters and policy has to give us both the flexibility and enough stability, you know, anchoring to be able to actually do things.
I think you pointed out, this is a different measure than the other ones we've done. So I think we're struggling. And this has been very helpful to staff to I thought particularly your comments about the three different groupings. I wrote those down. They really are very unique and distinct. And so we're going to have to sit down and say, how do we do a venture? How do we do a venture fund? And how do we how do we use this capital accelerator? So we've got some work to do. But I think we, you know, we sort of took the best shot at we have this much money. What are the projects that we think the council would like us to be working on? And we've got some good direction tonight. So we'll have to have to work on it.
That's manager said these were illustrative. And I mean, although it's been, you know, it's messy because it the underlying thing is messy. It is, as Ms. Andy said, it's a huge I mean, we're just blessed to have this opportunity in this community to be able to do this. And had you not included all this stuff in red or orange, whatever that is, we wouldn't have been able to have a productive conversation in that event because we'd be we wouldn't be able to imagine what it was that we were doing or what you were describing. So even though, you know, we may have said, we're not ready to do any of the orange or the red yet, having not having them there would have been would have been even would have been more problematic. So appreciate the work that's gone into, you know, even costing them out and scoping some of these things out because they've allowed us to really dig in to the key overarching policy questions that we'll want to that we'll want to work on together. So.
Good.
All right. So the request then is that we approve the categories and appropriations that we've just the black ones of the black ones that we have concurred with.
Did somebody was keeping score, right?
Yeah.
All right.
I was taking good notes. I got to be able to read my notes. It'll be.
And approve an allocation of the $200,000 towards other public safety programs, public safety programs, plus the whatever the amount needs to be for the homeless coordinator.
Correct.
From the from the projected fund balance from 2016.
So moved.
And then establish an ad hoc committee that would review the policies for E and also G.
Yeah, why don't we?
Yeah, I think it's.
If we can.
If we, yeah.
Yes.
Let's just say for ballot.
Ad hoc.
Let's say ballot measures, just so we're not we're not.
Go all over.
That's a good. I'll move that.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved by Ms. Andy and it's taken by Mr. Ledesma. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Turn down that motion carries. Thank you. All right, item 22. This is a presentation and discussion of proposed municipal code amendments related to medical and non-medical cannabis land uses within the city. Ms. Hamilton.
Okay. Good evening again, mayor and council members. We're back before you tonight to kind of check in and revisit the potential municipal code amendments related to cannabis land uses that we you did talk about back during in January of this year during your council strategic planning session. So I'll begin kind of with an overview of some of the legislation that has left led us to this point. And then we'll dig into some of the municipal code amendments to review them and see if there's any additional changes you want or have had a change of heart. And then, lastly, we also want to get direction on the process because we we do have some active applications before the planning commission and or in process. And so staff has proposed kind of a dual track process. So we're looking for that direction. So in 2015, the legislature passed the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act. And that brought forth legalization for certain medical cannabis uses. And the council did take some action with municipal code amendments. Leading up to that, actually, there was a prior legislative action that goes back even further related to medical. So we do have some of our we do have some things addressed in our zoning ordinance currently, but it's specifically around medical cannabis. Then in 2016, the people of California voted to legalize recreational cannabis use. And specifically, they identified three areas, personal use, commercial type businesses, and cultivation, both personal and commercial. And then also in 2016, the city council approved the first medical land use allowed in the city. And that was distribution, transportation, wholesale logistics. And that that business is currently in operation. And then subsequent to the two medical and non-medical cannabis legislation in 2015 and 2016, there's also been some cleanup language in both the 2016 state budget trailer bills and in the 2017, which was signed in just recently. And so with that, so that's got us that's where we're at today, what's brought us here today. So this slide is basically showing the categories on the left hand side of the land uses that are identified in the state legislation. And the the center column is specific to the zones of our city where they are currently allowed and or not allowed or not addressed. So this is sort of a summarized version of the very detailed attachment one in the agenda report. The state and then on the right hand side is the the current entitlement requests that are in process in these different categories and what zones they're they're seeking to locate in. So the state is positioning to issue licenses in the commercial categories beginning January 1, 2018. And if the city does not have regulations in place or we choose not to regulate, then the state will issue the licenses as they see fit. And so that's kind of one of the reasons why we're here before you tonight is to try to either get regulations in place before January 1 and or decide whether or not we even want to regulate and just allow the state to run the process. We're also here because we do are in we are in the middle of a moratorium that was adopted back in 2016 in response to the passage of Proposition 64. And that is a moratorium on outdoor personal cultivation and any incidental sales. That moratorium expires October 29. We would like to try to get this at least these areas addressed before then so we don't have to come back to you and request an extension of the moratorium. So with that, I'll go over this in a little bit more detail. So in attachment one, for indoor personal cultivation, we have we have some we're only we're limited on how much we can regulate. So the state law really puts forth a lot of prescriptions there. And so really, what we're doing on indoor personal cultivation is cleanup of our current language in Chapter 17.26, so that we are consistent with the current state law, both under medical and non-medical. So it's really cleanup language. And then on outdoor personal cultivation, basically, we're proposing to continue to have the prohibition on outdoor cultivation. And that's open open air cultivation. Our ordinance right now has it specific to medical. So we're just proposing to delete the term medical. So it would apply to both medical and non-medical. An individual could cultivate in a greenhouse. So they could cultivate in an enclosure in their backyard, but not out in the open air. So that is staff's recommendation so far. And I should have mentioned that this entire all of these have been reviewed at the same time collectively by the executive team. So all of our department heads have weighed in on on these proposed recommendations. Then on the commercial cultivation dispensaries, retails, deliveries, testing and bulk storage. So those categories are ones that are not currently covered by an entitlement application. And so that's hence the the versions that are highlighted in yellow are the ones that we're really looking to get direction on moving forward. And those are the ones that are outside of an entitlement request. So specific to commercial cultivation, we would be proposing an amendment to 17.26 that would remove references to medical throughout there. And what that would do is it would ban outdoor commercial cultivation of medical or non-medical cannabis in the city. And that's that's how far we would take that one at this point. With respect to dispensaries and retailers retailers, currently, we have a prohibition on dispensaries, which is for medical cannabis. We would be proposing to amend different code sections so that it includes both medical and non-medical. So there would be a prohibition on both of those. I would mention that since this agenda report came out, we have this week had two requests for a non-storefront retail that would be consisting of delivery only. And so we hadn't really thought about that before. And so we'd also be looking at, is that something you want us to include in this amendment and prohibit it? Or is it something that we might want to look at, break that out separately and maybe allow it in certain zones? And the best way to describe it is the original Domino's pizza sort of plan where a member of the public could not go up and place an order for a pizza and then receive the pizza. Basically, it's it's a person would call and the delivery would come to their their address. So there would be no public interaction with where the business is actually located. That's how it's been described to us, anyway. And then on testing, some of the other categories where we haven't had entitlement requests, we do we are proposing that we allow or that those be allowed in certain zones, such as the M zones and or the BP zone also for testing, but require the same type of entitlement process as what we've been pursuing so far. And that is the requirement for a use permit and a development agreement, and then also identifying the zones. And then for bulk storage, we were just going to refer that back to the cannabis distribution and manufacturing land uses that are being defined and in working their way through the process. And so have that be tied more to those two types of categories. And again, the same process and same entitlement process would apply. So the track that we're also looking at, the process, since we do have, and I'll move to the next slide so we have a picture. Since we do have five different entitlement applications in process, a couple of which have already been to the planning commission for a workshop and a couple more that are working their way there, is to go ahead and allow those to continue on their process as somewhat how you had indicated in back in January. But then also to then have staff start these other amendments that need to be done, either to address the moratorium and or to be ready for the state licensing. And so we're really looking at a dual track. But there are other alternatives that we could choose for the process, and those are outlined in the agenda report. So when we talk about the M zones, we're talking about those that are showing in the dark red, pink, and kind of light white. It's a little hard to see on this scale. And then the blue areas that are shown on on this exhibit are all the residential zones. Now, what wasn't picked up in this is the mixed use zones, which would also allow residential. So those are not highlighted. And that's probably something that we'll want to do the next time this makes an appearance. So the five triangles that are shown, those are showing the areas where the entitlement requests are currently pending. So note that they are all in the industrial zones, either ML, M1, or M2. So with that, I'll move on to whoops. So these this is our staff recommendation that's sort of encapsulating it in a summary. So we're asking you if it's okay for us to proceed with the following municipal code amendments, and then the categories that I kind of talked through just a little bit ago. And then alongside those are sort of a summary of the amendments that we would be the municipal code amendments that we're talking about pursuing. And then the last bullet is to continue the processing and the entitlements underway, sort of in parallel. And so with that, I will wrap up my presentation and turn it back to you for questions.
Questions from Ms. Hamilton?
I may.
Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. Thanks, Charlene. So on the recommendations, you also had on the map, what you don't have is the BP. Did I miss that? Because you were saying for testing, you want to allow BP in the M zones.
That's correct. Yes, it does not highlight the BP zones. So this was a map I pulled from the last planning commission meeting and.
Yeah, and it just it just is what you can you can forward that to me later. I know we're we're kind of moving on this. On. So really, the kind of directional is we're obviously with the state initiative passing and we're moving forward with enacting basically the ordinances to support that, correct? And it's to a degree here. I'm not quite well, I'm supportive of directionally what we have here. And but on the commercial cultivation indoor, I'm trying to go back to that's in the M zones in the ML limited is included in that?
Yes.
And I'm this. Some of that's in pink that borders on residential areas. And I'm just trying to think of what's in those areas that matches that use. Because I think I think that that's a little that's the only part that's kind of given me I don't want to say enough to discomfort. It's just an area that the ML zone is in some areas is right up abetting the blue residential or right in the middle of it. If you're looking on Commercial District on the center of town. Am I reading that right?
That is, let me get the larger map here.
There's like five shades of red, but only four on the legend.
Yeah, I know.
I know there is.
So yes, you are correct on that one. The one that so the one that we currently have an application on that also looks like it abuts some residential Interstate 80 actually is the divider. So. So to the, can we get the map back up on the, so I can point with an arrow? The last slide, or the second to the last slide? There we go. So this is ML here, but it is, it is separated from the residential by the freeway.
On the freeway.
So there's a buffer there.
But I am looking...
This is ML here, and that one is on West Capital, and you're right, it doesn't have, doesn't have near the buffer. Now, the triangle that's showing there, that's actually the existing business that's in place, and that's in the M1 zone, right next to the freeway. So it kind of, that little triangle did overlap, so now I'm talking about this one right here. So this triangle is actually in the M1 zone, and that's the business it's in right now.
That's M1, right, okay.
So, but we, one way we could address this is by saying, okay, allowed in ML zones, but only west of Interstate 80. So you can, you can create, you can create some zones. This has kind of come up a little bit, too, at the Planning Commission with regard to the M1 zone, and so there's, there's been some discussion about how we can say, yeah, it's allowed in this particular zone, but we can, we can put some geographic parameters on that.
Well, and again, it's just not knowing the kind of the scale of operations that we're sometimes talking about in here.
There's also some, there's also some radius parameters, distance parameters, from residential and state law for retail, unfortunately, it's just retail.
Right. And with the, the part of the map I'm also looking at, which I thought was ML, but it's actually, I think, M1, Light Industrial, which is north of the, the triangle you're just referencing, the site, which is...
This one, or this one?
To the right. And north of that, there's an extended period of M1 that I think bumps up.
Yes, and this is the part, this is the area here, here, and also over in the triangle area that has come up at the Planning Commission. And so I think staff was planning to, the next time we went to the Planning Commission to pose an alternative to the Planning Commission, that we, you know, limit the M1 allowances to a certain geographic area so that it wouldn't capture these areas.
And I'm going back to, I'm trying to find my matrix you had here, that you had...
We thought that might be a simpler process. The other method to do would be to create overlay zones, like plan developments, and, but those are a little more rigorous, and they also are difficult sometimes, if you ever want to make changes.
Right. And in reading, I think on your overview, I got a copy of your thing, your overview, it outlines that distribution, transportation are in M1, M2, or are these are just currently, are these...
Those are the entitlement requests that are in process.
Okay.
So we have one in the M1 zone and one in the M2 zone, and then manufacturing, we have ML, M1, and M2. Keep in mind, one of these entitlement requests actually has three different categories in it, so that's why it, on here, it might look like we have more than five, but we only have five requests.
And so, again, before I say, I'm not suggesting that you put in geographic overlay, but I'm trying to get a sense of, again, on all these sort of uses, or most of them, I think what we're asking for, most of them have to go through a development agreement or some sort of...
And a use permit.
And a use permit. So, so there will be some guardrails, at least reviewed by staff, to be able to, you know, I know, and the ones, some of the ones that have been proposed already are, are out there with very rigorous signage issues or whatever else we can, we can manage at the staff level through that mechanism, correct? So it's not very, if it's, if it's an indoor cultivation or manufacturer, distributor, it's not advertised to the world, it's just very contained, true?
Yes, that's what we've been including in the conditions, both under the use permit as well as the development agreement, where they're not allowed to have any exterior signage on their building and/or on their vehicles unless it's required by state law. They, the other, the other controlling mechanism that you will have through the use permit and the development agreement, it's not just the staff, but also the Planning Commission and the City Council will be able to, in some ways, pick and choose, because with the use permit, you need to make findings of necessity and a desirable use. So it could be in any one zone, you decide, we have too many, and there's too many in this one location, and therefore, we don't think it's desirable or necessary to add another one. And so that's how you can kind of regulate how many go into a zone, or which types go into that zone.
Yeah, because I'm not sure, I'm totally interested in governing or regulating land use down to the neighborhood. I am, I think, I am cautious about allowing these operations that are surrounded by residential, I'm just out front, but does that translate to you putting that in the ordinances, that, you know, we don't want it there? I don't know. I honestly, I'm sitting here debating that point of how much do we want to regulate, because today, we allow microbreweries, you know, you know, a few hundred feet from the Deerwood Street homes that are just right across, granted, there's the barrier there, industrial barrier, but there's breweries there, and there's, so I'm trying to get past that mental hurdle of how you, you know, how far do you go? If we have ultimate authority on, in guardrails to prevent, you know, a massive distribution or that may turn into retail at some point and want to, in the middle of that commercial business district, which is in the triangle, that would, that may be able to manage it. So, again, I'm just wanting to make sure I'm clear on what's, what can go in there and what can't. This is, yeah, I don't have any more comments, Mr. Mayor, I think this is just one of those areas that we have to get to comfort level, at least I do, on kind of what, a new industry that's burgeoning, that the state has said is allowable, and do we have all the checks and balances to make sure they're contained? So far, we've done an okay job with that. And, you know, this, this industry, well, you know, given the challenges it has elsewhere, again, I'm just, I think I just want to understand where they could go and what, how we can manage it going forward, so, thank you.
Mr. President, Johansson?
Just a quick question, does state law prohibit personal extraction?
Hi, no, I would have to check on that one.
Because you're adding it here.
Yeah, that, that was specific from our police department and fire department, they wanted to see that listed.
I was going to say, that's where kind of the public safety issue is.
Yeah.
At least what we're hearing in the reports in the paper, labs.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just curious whether or not it was prohibited.
But I, we'll, we'll double check that.
If it is, it probably wouldn't need to go here, I would imagine, but...
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Roscoe?
I just wanted to echo the comments and thoughts of Mr. Ledesma. It's taken me a while to get to the point where I could look at this objectively as well. Spending probably the first seven, eight years of my career prosecuting cases that have to do with marijuana, and then talking about whether or not it's going to be in my neighborhood now is a little bit of a transition. However, having had an opportunity to personally tour a facility, a lot of my mindset had changed with respect to distribution facilities. I do think, though, for the purposes of ensuring the public's confidence and, as everybody else transitions, that we do find some way to, and I don't know how we do that with the parameters, you know, and some, some type of protection, or, just ensuring that, yeah, that the folks in our community don't think that they're going to walk outside their door and there's going to be some type of cannabis facility. I think that that would be a hard pill to swallow early on. I think that the, you know, whether it's 500 feet from a residential area, or whether it's north of the highway, those should be considerations from my perspective, and so that's, that's what I had to...
Ms. Endy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for the presentation, Charlene, Ms. Hamilton. So with regard to the state mandate and the requirements now before us, how, I'm trying to get my head around, like, describing to us, is this, are we doing the kind of the minimum that we, we need, there's things that we need to do to change to come in compliance. Where would you put us in a spectrum? And then my question is, do we happen to know, even though it's within our discretion, what other jurisdictions surrounding us, how they're approaching this? I know this is all, we're all kind of grappling with it at the same time, but I just, I just am curious to kind of ground us in terms of, are we being really conservative or really liberal with how we're approaching this?
Hmm. Amanda, you want to jump in on some of this, too?
I can probably opine a little bit, given the fact that I've done research on a number of jurisdictions. I would say that the staff's recommendation before you is about middle of the road. There are still some cities that are taking a pretty extreme position and banning everything, with the exception of personal cultivation, which is something that cannot be prohibited in accordance with the Adult Use of Marijuana Act. And then there's other jurisdictions that are allowing but regulating many, many more of the cannabis activities than, than what has been brought before you today.
Okay. And so on the spectrum of where we're at, you know, we could do as little as dealing with the personal cultivation, we could choose to regulate the other commercial businesses or not, or we could continue the path that we have been on, which is sort of the middle, middle ground, so...
Yeah, I recall our, if I'm recalling our, the population here that voted, I think it was overwhelmingly in favor of, of the measure, so I'm just, I'm trying to, to balance all of that, knowing that we're representing the, the community, and to the, kind of the points that have been brought up, wanting, wanting to do as much as we can to kind of safeguard things, but also kind of honoring and respecting kind of the New World Order here. So I think this is a good, this is a good, comfortable set of recommendations to me, and it, I think it's helpful that, that you've had all the, as you mentioned, all of the directors and other departments weigh in, which is important to me as well, PD and others. So I think, I don't think this is necessarily an easy discussion, because we're trying to figure out something that we haven't dealt with quite like this before. I think simplifying the language is also important and providing clarity to folks as well, and this would go back to, you mentioned, to Planning Commission, right?
Correct. Yeah, this was just a check-in, to make sure that, you know, checking in with you to see if there'd been any changes or any thoughts, because it has been a couple months since we discussed this, and before we started an effort of working on full-blown ordinance and amendments and working our way through the Planning Commission and the public process. So, so this still has quite a bit of process to go through, and who knows what it will come to you, what it will look like when it does come back to you.
I'm actually pretty comfortable with a lot of the recommendations, Charlene. Saying a lot comes from where I was in, in January, where I wasn't comfortable with any of it, including probably indoor personal cultivation. However, I appreciate and agree with the position on dispensaries and retailers, as well as outdoor commercial cultivation, and think that, you know, having, again, having had the opportunity to get a little bit more information under the belt, that distribution, transportation, and manufacturing, even though manufacturing's not specifically addressed here, maybe...
Yeah, that's our current, I should probably go to the next slide, because that really, so here, it kind of talks about some of the things that we would be doing with these amendments that I think you're referring to.
Yeah, I agree with all the comments. I have, I appreciate the journey that the council, the community, we're all, we're all going through and getting to this, to this space, and everyone's gone in a different way, but the council's been ready to, to learn, to adapt, to hear the signals, and it's all been changing pretty quickly, but, I mean, I mean, we're here because we've got to, we have to reconcile the distinctions between how we've been approaching federal law and the changes in the, in the state legal environment on both the medical and the recreational side, and so just doing nothing, we can't, we can't just leave our ordinances the way they were, because the changes in state law compel us to make some changes, and the changes in state law raise all sorts of, sorts of other ambiguities and empty spaces in our ordinances that would permit, if we didn't take any action at all, they would permit the unfettered expansion of marijuana business in some category. So it's, we have to be doing this, and it does make sense. For me, I mean, I think all the, you know, the comments about the, you know, the will of the voters are really key, and also the, you know, our experience now, we have, we have these facilities, we know what they're like, and, you know, a lot of the concerns that we've, we've, we've either had ourselves or dealt with from folks in the community, well, you know, what about issues around smell and odor? Well, you know, in all of these zones, you could make fertilizer in one of the buildings, which is fairly, you know, fairly odiferous as well, but we have regulations that, that make that impermissible. You cannot, yes, you could make fertilizer in the M1 zone, but you can't create, you cannot create any odors, period. We just don't allow that. And folks say, well, you know, it's going to, it's a high-value crop, so it's going to be a magnet for crime. If you want to store diamonds in the M1 zone in a warehouse, we don't prohibit that. We don't say, you know, you're only allowed to use our warehouses in West Sacramento if you're storing crappy stuff with no value. We don't, we don't have that. And, I mean, so our, our niche for a hundred years has been in the manufacturing, distribution, logistics arena, and, you know, the history of cannabis and its other, and cannabis use aside, the industrial portion of, of the cannabis industry is a, I mean, it does naturally fit in with, with what we've already been doing in so many other ways, as long as we can, can protect. But the, those protections are not unique to this, to this product. And even the drug, McKesson was making all kinds of pharmaceuticals here as well, that misused, you know, if somebody had broke in and stolen them and misused them, it would have created at least as many health issues as cannabis. And so in each of those domains, there's at least one cognate where we've already, where we've accepted long ago that what's important is that we have the right regulatory and environmental protections and health protections to make sure that whatever it is, whatever the use is inside, that there's no effect on the, on crime, or on smell, or on other issues that we might be concerned about. As that, as that inflection point happens, though, because it is such a significant industry, I do think, you know, I'm going to keep nudging that we, that we make that change even faster, and I think it's happening, but, you know, if it's a real industry and we have people in our community who are being, have been displaced from manufacturing jobs, from logistics jobs, from distribution jobs, from trucking jobs, that we ought to, you know, if, if we're not serving a public purpose, other than, you know, being, you know, being anxious about it, if we're not serving a public purpose and putting the brakes on it, there's a cost to putting the brakes on it, and that is that we are, we are not as competitive in the market to attract companies in those spaces that our people might work in and that generate the, the, the jobs and the tax revenues that support the health of the community, just like in any other industrial sector. So I think this, this is the right approach, it's why, one of the reasons why we have, why we're in this space now, adopting a framework that is universal, as opposed to us taking them up one project at a time. But I, but I appreciate the, the way that we've gotten here is because we've been, we've been willing to learn and to try and to, and to see and to adapt to the, to the needs and opportunities that are coming. This seems like the logical next step in accomplishing that. But I hope that Planning Commission, I know they've had, they, they've also struggled with the, with the moral questions and the...
with the, with the moral questions and the historical questions around drug use and all of that, and I hope they, that they will, they will kind of see the track record in our own community and also these, these other protections that are intended to deal with all of those issues so that we can look at this primarily as a land use and economic issue. So I'm supportive of, not necessarily every single detail, go through the process, but this is really a very strong start, and it's all the right questions and most of the right answers, so...
I agree. All right, so you're asking...
Is there any feedback on that new inquiry that we had with respect to non-storefront retail, delivery-only? Do, do we want to put it out there and see what the Planning Commission says, or do...
Is there any direction? Or are there questions that you would like answered about this? I mean, it's, it's probably a bit much of a topic to have raised just tonight and necessarily get conclusionary statements, but if there...
Debate a specific project and, not on the agenda.
Right. But if there are, if there are policy, you know, questions or issues that you'd like, that staff would be looking at, or the commission, or what have you?
Yeah, but I mean, with the current proposal, what we have is, any type of retail is going to be prohibited. So that would fall under the, a prohibition under staff's current recommendation. So, and maybe that's how we'll proceed, and then we'll see how it works its way through the Planning Commission and the public process.
I agree with that.
Yeah, sounds good.
All right, do you need anything else from us?
No, I think we're clear.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, then Council Calendar, Ms. Brule.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Some events that are coming up that you might be of interest. This Saturday, July 1st, is the First Summer Night Lights event at Riverbank Elementary. It's from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. On the day, so you should have a copy of the flyer that sets forth the, the other events that are happening in July. There's a Kings mini camp on July 8th, a Rivercats visit on July 15th, and a Sac Republic mini camp on July 22nd. And then July 13th, Thursday, is the next Farmer's Market at The Barn. And then on July 21st is the Youth Fire Academy graduation in the Galleria, and that's at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Questions on the calendar? City manager report?
Just briefly, Caitlin Miller didn't mention the summer step interns. They had to give two hours of a city council meeting. So I think in the next year, that which will be our fourth year, we'll make them sit through an entire council meeting, so they can hear the city manager's comments at minimum. But Eric is still here, so that's significant.
Double badges for Eric.
Double badges, you got it, all right. Since we don't have a port commission meeting this month, I did want to alert the, the council that we've had a lot of activity at the port, and Friday will be the first vessel that will go to CEMEX since they relocated to the port in 2009. So there's going to be a ship coming up from Mexico to unload cement at CEMEX, so that'll be the first time we see that investment pay off for the, for the company. And then I'll be on vacation for the next three weeks, but Amanda will be here, Phil will be here, so there should be no issues. I'll be back for the July meeting.
All right, questions for the city manager? City attorney report?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Staff direction for members of the council? We have no future agenda item requests, so Ms. Andine moves and Mr. Johannesen seconds that the meeting be adjourned. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.